You know, odds are somebody else has a question too.
Remove that rock out of there.
Yeah.
What questions you ask, you know, the faster it's like anything.
Contra rock.
Faster you pick up how things work.
And this is the trail, you know, there's a section.
So if you have questions specific to the items, or if you have questions.
Everybody has a section.
Process.
So we are actually.
You ask for clarification all the time, so don't feel like you can't.
Maybe stop me.
Not stopping.
A hundred feet here.
I ask for clarification. Okay, great, and so will somebody present each of those public hearings?
Put them on the side, you know, so they have a better.
Yes, so the first, the way the public.
Fifty staff report. Over to Valley.
Staff report.
We did these last year.
Board asks questions of staff.
Just those five steps, two days.
Applicant who represents the applicant comes forward, shares any pertinent.
Well, because when you work with rock, you've got iron bars.
We open to the public input section of the hearing.
Then you have nets.
The public are invited to come speak.
Irons. You get six guys together.
It's because I just, this.
Anything that's come up, we can ask.
Bob, he's seventy-five years old.
Questions we can ask of the staff.
Yeah.
And he's still.
He went to Spain to go hike the Camino, and there's like nine or eleven different Caminos over there. And he's done like six of them.
Make a motion, will be seconded, you are able to make an amendment to a motion.
That was my friend's.
Yeah, I don't think.
Double Weet was her husband.
Katie makes a motion.
Trust. She was my hiker.
So for example, this thing, somebody will need to approve as is, I could say, I could make.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Grizzly Bear from Maine.
There's no, we can't really.
Right, so you call.
Provided they do the amendment.
Right, so you call for a friendly amendment, and the way that process works is the person that initially made the motion is like.
Big park.
Reject that friendly amendment.
And they put.
If it's been seconded, the person who seconded it then also has to either accept or reject.
Got it.
So the crowd, you know, they're doing a motion at this time.
We don't, we don't usually do.
Shivers.
Call.
She was for the Conservancy, that's the executive director for the Conservancy.
Oh, cool.
So.
And remind me, are you originally from Virginia?
What else? So why don't you just don't govern the question. Well, we historically have been very civil.
I saw him in the crowd.
So you will see people sort of waiting their turn, or if I.
And that's the executive director giving a big speech to everybody.
Well, I might, you're okay.
We had, we have a town of eight-hundred-and-seventy-five people.
But so.
Party on.
So in that sense, Robert's rules are followed exactly to the letter, because it's sort of like if, if we can.
No.
Play friendly, then.
This is broader.
We can, and so Robert's rules are really.
You take the three days of trail days.
Take the minority, right?
And then you take the little portion over here.
So if we can sort of manage that on our own, then it's, it's better, I think it's better, sort of, the culture of the board to.
That was, while we were down there, you know, I took it to different settings, you know.
I'm sure things will come up, but.
It's just, it was.
Oh, I'm not, I'm out of town the next meeting.
This is.
Shall I let Audrey know?
Trail day, you should just get free food everywhere.
Oh, wow.
The Baptist church puts on this spaghetti one year, chicken another year.
Travel set, and then you.
Chicken, you know.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
All the people come in, you get a ticket for it, and then you show up, and then.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And when you speak, just make sure that you're speaking.
Back, right here.
Mike.
Come in over here.
Our recorded address.
You know, and everybody plump, 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 you know.
They're street blocks.
And if you ask real nice, you know, say, hey, can I get a little bit bigger piece?
Get on there.
Gives me a little tiny piece.
Really? How it works? Oh, I'm good at it.
So he takes that one back and he gives me the big.
Nice.
That's awesome.
This is the backside. Hi, I'm Jim. Ironhouse, you know, and people.
Your person.
That was, that was sly, this OSHA-safe ladder.
Oh, my God. Is that like a luggage? Oh, a trunk.
Two big toolboxes, they standing on top, and they're both oil, you know, oil-based plastic, so I can see it.
That is just sort of like a little blurb.
So this is still considered, they're gonna consider.
Matt, this is Steven.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, and they're not putting that.
I'm going on vacation, I'm getting a lowdown.
And here's the thing, I get, they essentially reconfigured the front.
Veterans Park, down at the master's.
Building now, parking us the road.
Yeah, so they have a big, you know, a big.
What is the sort of thing where?
Were you there for the fourth?
No, no, just back in May there.
Yeah.
But that's a stream that runs down through there.
Like, all the trees got cut down, well.
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
Hey, you did it, like, no one noticed.
I want on vacation too.
Change, like, people are gonna notice, you know, so he's gonna.
The.
Right, fifteen minute drive.
Yeah.
So here's what happened, right?
Yeah. Make sure you're here.
They plan that they're providing.
Durham, where'd you go to?
They're asking for that.
Durham in, you know.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, so there's a group.
With yurts?
Yep, there are four yurts on the property, they're books.
And it becomes a sticky wicket, because we could just approve it the way it is there. It's okay, we've approved this change in the site plan.
I've met him somewhere.
We didn't approve change of the site plan, prior to change of the site plan.
We're all somewhere.
I have been to.
Did I send you guys this code enforcement summary thing?
He's on the other side of town.
Are you, sometimes people.
No, I told them.
Or you mean physically or in a little bit, in general?
Can we go to the bottom on my screen?
You know, I just can't give you guys more paper. I know you want more paper.
Put everything over there. You gave me Center Street, or not Center Street.
This is a code enforcement.
Center Street.
Yeah, how are you?
No, I'm.
You've got lots of sun.
Well, bring, put them in line, sometimes you gotta put brokers in line.
I did.
I told him he's gonna get a bag of.
You're gonna suck down there, but John isn't here, so don't feel like you're gonna be like, what is this?
See, this is what I do.
Brian might even not be hanging around, he's running for city council.
Oh, really? Yeah. Because my wife does.
I get paid for this face.
And have you heard from either John or Sam?
I don't think I have none.
Probably not.
We'll hold it till like, maybe six oh threes, like that.
That's Jason.
Are we?
Jason.
Roland.
That's LeVey.
So, um. So that you guys know, the recording has. I'm gonna hold it in, of course, that John's are just sort of caught in the car sentence.
Matt's gonna be a full member, Matt's gonna be a full.
But, yeah, so, just, just so you guys know.
We're here in Alamo Stadium.
It's kind of unique, almost the last time we met someone.
That's Jonathan, that's.
Yeah.
Not that I know of. I'm seeing a trail.
Yeah, this thing you mean?
I did, I only did, no, my red wind jacket, so I just carry a hat.
Lost a lot of members, there's been a lot of turnover actually.
So who did Matt take? So they're the ones who got the job.
Yeah. I know, I did. I don't know. Way Santa, and now I've.
You know.
It's like this in all council chambers, I think. That's awesome, are those hiking?
Yeah, that's what I wore when I was hiking.
Turn it off.
Except for the hat.
Let me guess, your trail name was Santa?
No, but it's Grizzly Bear from Maine, and I got that many, many, many years, always, because I have brown hair and I have silver tinted hair, so it's like, Grizzly, my, we be as they. But this was taken for a book about all the hikers from two thousand fourteen. Yeah, with all the good people. Anyway, alright. Hey, is the recording on?
Alright, there we go.
Oh, well, alright.
Did you get, did you get caught up in the Carapalooza out there?
What's that?
Did you get caught up in that antique Carapalooza out there? Sort of, fresh traffic patterns a little bit?
Got caught up?
Yeah.
This will be.
Good evening, I've, I've held the start of the meeting for a few minutes in hopes that the remainder of the members would show up, I'm worried that they're being sort of rerouted outside because of the change in traffic pattern, but we're, we're mostly all here, so I'm going to call the July ninth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Opera Planning Board to order. We'll begin with a roll call, however, before I do that, you will hear one new name tonight. To my far right, we have Mr. Matt Duval, who was appointed a full member of the planning board by the city council, and to his left, we have returning Katie Boss, who has been appointed a full member of the planning board, and previously she was present as an associate member, so having introduced the two, we'll begin with a roll call at my far left.
John Angler.
Dustin Booton.
Brian Carrier.
Evan Seer.
Stephen Martelli.
Katie Boss.
Matt Duval.
The next item on our agenda are our minutes, however, they are not available at this time, so we will move on to our first public hearing. So that members of the audience understand the planning board process, our public hearings proceed as in the following manner, we receive a staff report, during and directly after the staff report, the planning board members are encouraged to ask questions of the staff that they might have, we will then ask the applicant, or an agent of the applicant, to come forward, provide any additional information they think is pertinent, planning board members may ask questions of that individual, excuse me, at that time. When that discussion is done, we will open up the public input section of the hearing, and hear from the public, when there are no more individuals from the public that would like to speak, we will close that section of the hearing, and the board will begin deliberations amongst themselves in order to, excuse me, I should have had some water before the meeting, the board will have a discussion amongst themselves in order to reach a resolution on the topic. So to that end, Ms. Knight, are we ready for our staff report?
Yes, we are, and tonight I have the pleasure of introducing you to our latest member in the Department of Economic and Community Development, Megan McGlavlin, and she is with us tonight to report on Coleman Collision Project.
Thank you, good to be here. Nice to meet you all. So in your memo, we have a brief description of the Coleman's Collision Project, it's an expansion, and it's before the planning board, because the area that they're proposing to expand is greater than ten percent of the existing footprint of the structure, the proposal's straightforward, the only exception being the parking, which we identified in the staff memo, you'll note that the original approval from nineteen eighty-eight included a couple of landscaped areas in the front on Minor Ave, as well as some organized parking in the rear of the lot, and the ordinance requires that there be landscaping between the space, between the parking area and the right-of-way line to the street, and it also doesn't allow parking within ten feet of the right-of-way, and we also have an aerial picture up, so you can kind of see what it looks like today. The original approval also included nineteen parking spaces in the front of the lot, and twenty-four in the rear of the lot for screened vehicle storage, and the proposal that's before the board tonight only includes fifteen parking spaces in the front, and doesn't appear to designate spaces in the rear. We did note in the memo that we recommend the board vote in favor of the application, but that there be some conditions to address the landscaping in the parking situation.
Thank you very much, I trust that members of the board have had a chance to look through the materials, are there questions of the staff at this time? I have a question, so it was noted that, and we have a visual of what this looks like, it was noted that there was originally some landscaping, which no longer exists, does staff have any sense of the timeline as to when that was removed?
So in the staff report, we went back through the aerials, and you can see in the nineteen ninety-eight aerial, there's a little bit of landscaping, but not very much, and that's the furthest that we were able to go back and see, because the others start, I think, in the seventies, and this was approved in the late nineties, so we couldn't find anything after the ninety-eight aerial picture.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martelli?
Yeah, how many feet is it from the front of the building to the curb?
This area.
What is it?
Just this area here?
Yeah. Any idea?
No, I'm, just, I would guess it's probably around thirty or forty feet.
Thirty feet? Alright, my question would be to the, to the owner of the business, do they get any deliveries with a tractor-trailer?
Well, let's, well, as, as a point of order, we'll hold that question until we have the applicant, please, thank you.
Because I have several questions that's gonna come off of that.
Okay, we'll, we'll hold that until we have the applicant.
Right, very good.
Yes, Mr. Duval?
Yeah, so, as it is now, looking up there, any idea what the distance is between the curb and the road?
Yeah, so it looks like the, the plan, the site plan shows at almost thirty feet in the paved area that goes from the curb to the building, this looks like it is probably a five-foot. Let me measure.
Distance is twenty-nine, eight from the old, from the new section of the corner to the.
Do you know the.
Line according to this.
If this is accurate, it's a probably a six-foot wide width right here, from the paved area here to here, if that's what you're asking, you're asking for this width?
Yeah. So that would not satisfy the ten-foot setback.
Is staff aware of the impact that widening that, that section of the road had on the landscape that was approved in the original site plan? Or is that something that you prefer I ask the applicant?
We're, we're unaware of that change, or when that might have impacted this property, it's something that we can research.
I'll hold that question for the applicant.
Yeah.
Are there other questions specifically for the staff? Seeing none at this point, the board would like to extend an invitation to the applicant or agent, and when you come forward, because these meetings are recorded, please state your name and your position.
My name's James Titus, I am facilities manager for POC Collision and Coleman's Collision.
Thank you very much, before we ask questions of you, is there any additional information that you think is pertinent that was either omitted from the materials that were given to the board, or from the staff report?
Nope, everything looked fine.
Okay, thank you, at this point, it sounds like there are some questions from the board, so I will let Mr. Martelli begin.
Good evening, I take it that you get deliveries with a fifty-three-foot box trailer every so often?
Yes, occasionally we do, probably not very often, maybe once every month or two.
Alright, do you also tow in cars with a large flatbed and a, an extra car on the tail end?
Yes.
Alright, okay.
I can elaborate on that a bit if you would like.
How many, how many cars do you tow in like that, in a week, month?
It could be up to thirty a week.
Thirty a week?
Yeah.
Alright.
I think the, the point that you're speaking to is that the thirty-two-foot curb cut in the original site plan, in your opinion, appears to be too small, given the.
Well, it, it's not just that it's too small, the alignment is incorrect, it, it's not cohesive with a, a large vehicle making a turn off of the main road, going into the business area, they usually pull behind the business, am I correct?
You are correct.
And drop everything off?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so they are not gonna be able to, to make an S curve trying to get in there with a large vehicle, I would recommend making one large island in the center, and leave the two end pieces off, do you see what I'm saying?
So that, as curb cuts, or just as non-landscaped?
Non-landscape, and open that, that curb cut further back on the, onto the ends of the property, so that they can get around the back of the building easier in a straighter line.
Does ordinance allow for an area that is not a curb cut to not contain landscaping?
The ordinance language says the area between the parking area and the street right-of-way line shall be landscaped.
So, it sounds like if you would like a, a larger area, the, the entirety of the area needs to be a curb cut.
You could do that?
Yeah.
Or just realign that curb cut down towards the end of the building, so that their trucks can get in and out in a straight line, and have the parking directly in front of the building.
Yeah, and it, it appears that's what's happened, sort of by default, on the new site plan, is that that curb cut is no longer directly in front of the building, but, what direction is that?
And Steve, the picture's a little, might be a little deceiving, that actual distance is pretty much what a standard road is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Yeah.
And they're really.
But with the directions that we have here, alright, they're showing that the curb cuts are gonna be in front of the building, and if your truck is trying to maneuver in with a car on the back of that flatbed.
Right.
You know, trying to make an S curve coming into that parking lot, it'll be difficult.
Well, they actually come right straight in off Minor Avenue.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Now.
And down.
Now.
Now.
Yes. But with their new revision, you're not gonna have that.
They're actually not changing the curb cuts.
No, we aren't changing the curb cuts, and nothing in front of the building.
Okay, I see, I see.
I'm going by this.
That's the old site plan.
Can, can you go back to street view?
Alright.
Right, so what Steve, what Steve is saying, though, is that the curb cuts on the original plan that we're looking at do not match the current site plan or the current site.
Right.
I guess is, is the point that Steve's trying to get at, or Mr. Martelli, I apologize, Steve.
That's alright. Just don't call me late for dinner.
Alright, I promise.
You're gonna keep the curb cuts there?
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah, so, to get back to that point with regard to landscaping, I think Mr. Martelli brings up an important point, I don't think it's necessary that the curb guts go back, curb cuts go back to their placement with regard to the original site plan, but that the current site plan does meet current ordinance, which requires a landscaping buffer barrier there, the, the curb cuts as shown on the current proposed site plan do match the site, and I think it would be reasonable to leave them there.
Alright, I'll go along with you on that.
Other questions of the applicant? Are you aware when the, when the landscaping was removed, and when the curb cuts were sort of changed?
I am, I don't know dates, I've been there fifteen years, of course, and it's been that way ever since I started. There has been a few landscaping situations that they have done in the, you know, yeah, recently, you know, they made a flower box and put up that new sign, and in front of the bill, in front of the office, they've mulched that area and improved that area. What would you propose that we need to do?
Well, there, there are two things in, in looking at the, the current situation. Yes, Mr. Martelli?
Go, go, go.
As was pointed out, so there needs to be landscaping along the entirety of the front, between the property and the right-of-way, and the, if I remember quickly, the parking at the front of the lot also does not meet with current ordinance, am I correct in saying that? It is too close, it is too close to the, to the.
Yeah.
To the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
So essentially, what we're saying is that in order to meet ordinance, landscaping that would have been there originally needs to be replaced, and that parking in the front of the building would need to be reconfigured.
Well, you know, to my knowledge, I can't ever remember any landscaping being there, I've, I've lived right near there for fifty years.
Well, the two thousand one image appears to show landscaping.
It does.
Can't remove the sidewalk. Can't remove the sidewalk, so they would have to.
Would, do you have some type of jarring or something showing landscaping?
Yeah, it's in.
Yep, right here.
Yep, right, two thousand one image, top right.
You mean right in front of the vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
That's actually the curbing.
That's the curb.
In the sidewalk, yes. There's never been any.
There's never been anything there, okay.
Any greenie, greenage there at all.
So, it, it's important that you understand, we're not trying to saddle you with an undue burden.
Okay.
But things like this do happen occasionally and come before us, or it is unfortunate that a site has been altered at some point in the past, and not even by someone who's familiar with the, the current configuration, unfortunately, however, site plans are approved in perpetuity, and the original site plan was approved, and I would wager to bet that our ordinances have changed slightly, however, the current configuration does not match with our current ordinance either, so the board is sort of in a spot where not only has the site been altered with regard to the originally approved site plan, which is not allowed, the current site also doesn't meet current ordinance, so this is, this is the, this is, this is the, the sticking point for us, and I understand it is incredibly unfortunate, because I know that you are looking at putting on an addition, and I'm sure part of that budget was not slated for reconfiguring the front of the property.
Absolutely not. And it's actually, I, what's, what site plan do you keep referring back to, sir?
We. It is the original nineteen eighty-eight approval.
Of, approval of?
Of the site. So it is when the addition, in this image, the addition to the far left was.
Yes, yes, I understand. So it probably never was, and unfortunately, we didn't own the business at that time, so it probably never was brought to what you had asked for at that point.
Okay, I, I think this is something the board will have to sort of take up in deliberation after the, the public input section, to decide how we'd, we'd like to deal with this, but.
Is, as far as what you have out front there, has been existing, other than the eighty-eight addition, has been a. has been a, you know, existing for fifty years. That's what it's been like, ever since, uh, Mr. Coleman started it.
I can absolutely understand, um, sort of your surprise that, uh, what's there is, is essentially non-conforming.
Right, and I do understand your point in the matter.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Engler.
So, the original site plan had a lot more overflow parking in the back. Would that be possible to incorporate in this new application?
Absolutely, and on the original site plan, which I don't have in front of me.
I, you know, I don't think I got it either, actually.
It's on here.
It's sort of stapled.
Stapled to the back of that shit there.
Like this?
Oh, okay, I've got it.
Thank you.
It was stapled to the back of...
Yes, I have it, yes.
Collar photo, yep.
Yeah.
How much property do you own in the, in the back?
In the back, we own quite a bit. Um, I had it surveyed by Cullenberg. Uh, there is probably three or four hundred feet behind the existing buildings and it must run a, a two hundred feet widthwise. It goes a little bit of the shape of a pie. And we're planning on actually answering this question a little more. There's a lot of area that, out there that we've been using for parking, but it hasn't really ever been prepared for parking. It's just, you know, open and we're planning on putting some reclaim in that area and that would greatly increase the amount of cars that we can put out back. Right now it's probably, oh, at any said time, there might be thirty cars to forty cars out there and this would greatly increase that as well. And, um, we're planning on moving the propane storage tanks, right, further out back as this addition happens, so it will give us a larger area.
How many gallons of propane you got?
I have three, um, one thousand.
Three one thousand?
Yeah.
So you got three thousand possible?
Yeah, it's a big supply. We have a very large paint booth that we're running with it, so...
And that's, that's off to one side type, away from...
Directly in the back.
Activity?
Um, there, there it is, right there.
Yeah.
And the new location will be off to one side in the further back. In fact, if you can see right where his cursor is right now, I mean, that whole area could potentially be used for parking. Whereas we're just using by the tanks now. So that will greatly increase the parking in the rear.
The parcel's, uh, one point five acres in size.
Thank you.
What was that, Audrey?
One point five acres.
One point five.
Mr. Engler? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'd like a, a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So made.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
This is, uh, boss, so there's a motion to open, uh, the public input section in a second. All those in favor? We'll now open the public input section. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to go back to your seat. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, uh, I will accept the motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So made.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in a second, all those in favor? Excellent.
May I ask, uh, point of order?
Yes.
Am I participating as an alternate this evening?
That is an excellent question, we usually handle that right up front. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes.
So I don't need to be participating in the procedural voting?
In the procedural voting, correct.
Okay, so I...
I, I apologize, I apologize, Mr. Engler, I'm usually really good about sort of, uh, front-loading that, but, yes. Board discussion.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
What's the, the minimum amount of space that they, we would need to, or they would need to have planted, uh, from the existing curb line? That's presently there to meet the standard and, and how much room would that leave them? According to the site plan that you can tell, to be, continue to use that as a drive?
I don't think we have a specific standard for it aside from saying that the area between the parking area and the street right-of-way line needs to be landscaped. So as, as far as they can put the spaces up within the right-of-way line and get that landscaped, it doesn't specifically say a minimum or a maximum.
It's, it's plant survivability is really what you're looking at. Um, you could, he could essentially, um, continue with planter boxes similar to what he's already has up. That might guarantee some more survivability or easier maintenance and keep out of the plows. It would maybe make it easier, he wouldn't have to dig up, uh, concrete and pavement to be able to do that. Um, so that might be one solution. Two or three feet, as long as we have the setback of ten feet and that the, the cars are screened. Well, it's, yeah, visual block.
Don't, yeah, that's been interpreted several ways, Mr. Carrier, and, um, I've seen screening, uh, occasionally the board will require screening that is, um, quite tall and sometimes it's screening that is, is not tall but it's really more of, uh, creating a visual separation from the parking and the right-of-way and so that's deemed as being screening. So, I, I, I saw the look on your face, don't get caught up with the idea of screening being like the, uh, arbor vitae that's twenty feet tall and it's...
Well, no, I'm just thinking...
I misspoke, I, I shouldn't have said screening, vegetative buffer. So there's some break to the asphalt and, uh, metal.
But with no set, I mean technically it could be a one-foot swath of grass. Dryscape.
Until the planning board sets standards differently. It is up to your interpretation and, um, the pleasure of the board.
Are there other questions, uh, for the staff before we sort of enter into discussion?
A naive question, so the edge of the road is at the curb or is it the fog line? What's, what is actually defined as the edge of the road?
So, in this case, I believe the edge of road, if you look at your site plan, right, so the right-of-way, if this is, if this is accurate. Is this accurate? Uh, would be at the, the right-of-way line would be here at the, at the edge.
White line?
No, this is part of the, the right-of-way. Yeah, so it could be this curb line.
Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to approach that way, they can have a better understanding.
So when dealing with the right-of-way, we often think of only the road itself, but it extends beyond roads. So in this case, the right-of-way and...
You see another map?
On the, on the road edge of the sidewalk or on the...
No, the...
Interior.
Entirely of the sidewalk is...
So, they have to go ten feet back from that?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I think, I think we are in sort of one of these unfortunate situations that come up occasionally in which we're required to enforce, um, ordinance, which is law. Um, it's clear that the site that is currently there has not conformed to ordinance for quite some time, however, um, because there was no waiver requested in the, for the, the new site plan, um, it really would not be appropriate for us to, uh, utilize that mechanism. It, it is difficult, uh, had a waiver been, uh, requested, uh, we would have had sort of the possibility of, of waiving that requirement based on specific findings. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I think at this point, um, uh, the applicant might be best served to seek a variance after the, um, approval of a site plan tonight. Uh, that they seek a variance to that site plan via the, or through the zoning board of appeals.
If they perceive a hardship and that can be demonstrated, then yes.
Okay, and so does everyone understand what I'm, what I'm proposing? Uh, I'm proposing that the planning board enforce, uh, the laws that we have, um, essentially been sworn into, to, to uphold. But, uh, let the applicant know as a board that you are, that the applicant is able to, um, appeal certain decisions and seek a variance and they would do so through the zoning board of appeals and that there is a process for that. But then unfortunately, I don't see a mechanism in which the board can reasonably, uh, allow the site to remain, um, as is in its current state and still feel comfortable that we've, that we've done our job. And, uh, so now that I've said that I'd like, uh, because one person does not a board make, so I would like to hear sort of other people's feelings, uh, on that. Mr. Carrier?
Given the, the current situation with the rules that we have to work with and I will agree with you that we can't move forward with, with this plan as it is at now without a variance, so...
I agree with that. I also think, uh, that it might not be that much additional expense actually to move forward with this, if, if the, I don't know if the plan can actually be amended, um, and then...
We can amend it, we can, yes, we can do whatever we would like during the meeting.
Because I could, just looking at what I think you're trying to do, it seems like you could add a small strip of landscaping and then angle the parking a little bit better in front of the building, um, which will improve the safety of how that parking will flow. That would become a one-way through there. And then you lose a few spots out front, but you have so much gravel space out back, it seems like that you could, you could have your overflow out there. Just a thought.
I'm in agreement with the, uh, approach.
Yeah, and I agree with, uh, what Mr. Engler has, um, provided as a reasonable edit to the site plan.
A thin island of dividing in the front there, I would go with. The one other thing I would, and I'm not trying to be, you know, negative, but is the propane. I'm nervous on that, alright? Being in the iron business for forty years, I saw a lot of gas being blown up. So, uh, I would recommend that, uh, propane be moved away from the building into a safer area.
And we actually do have curried areas all over the ground.
Yep. But I would also like to see it so that he can get a fifty-three foot trailer in, he can get a large flatbed with a car on the back in, into a horseshoe-type shape going around the building so that he can get in and out easy enough.
In fact, there is an exit on the, both ends.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so they could...
Space for him to turn a fifty-three footer in the back, yeah.
Well, the thing is, I'm, I'm thinking if you have a, a, a high accident rate time, you're going to have cars all over the place. At least he can get in and out and, you know, make his delivery and go. He's not tied up trying to maneuver around, so... Small island of planting in the front of some sort, you know, planter boxes or whatever and to keep those two driveways open and the propane tanks, that's what I see, so...
I, I apologize, I'm taking notes so that way when we make our motion...
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
In the island area that we have now, if we were, were to put planters of some type, can we take from the island or not? This is very tight in there as you can see.
I, I understand, unfortunately, um, you cannot, however, um, I think the board, uh, is not going to, um, place a restrictive, um, requirement on the width such that, um, it will need to be a vegetative buffer. But it will not need to be, uh, you know, five feet, yeah.
We, one more thing and that would be, is there any plan for the future, next two to five years, for that road to be widened in that area?
Not that we know of at this time.
Okay.
The right-of-way I believe is, um, fifty feet and I think we're near that.
Alright, so if we made those planters out of something movable, they can be bounced around, alright?
I have an additional question for the staff before we begin making any motions. Uh, it was mentioned in the staff report that the number of spaces at the front of the building do not meet the, the minimum required for such a business. Uh, my question is, um, I don't ever remember a situation in which we require the spaces to be in a specific place such that if, um, the applicant were to build, were to, uh, put spaces in the rear, they would also count towards that required number, correct?
My only thought would be ADA, making sure the spots are ADA compliant if they have any or if there's a requirement for ADA spots as well, those would have to be in the front. If the entrance is in the front.
Right, but currently as proposed, there aren't enough spaces in the front. However, it could spill onto the back as long as they're meeting those requirements, okay?
Yeah, there's no requirement that says parking has to be in the front.
Can I, um, just ask for clarification on Mr. Engler's suggestion? Can you state, um, relative to the ordinance, what you're suggesting?
Well, my current understanding is that, um, the non-conformance issues here are the landscaping and then we need to ensure that there's enough parking because the fifteen spaces in the application, it's not really aligned with the amount of traffic that I think this business is experiencing. It's not a problem though because of the large overflow in actuality. So, it seems like the land, this, I mean, this is effectively a beautification issue, isn't it?
This... What about the setback?
Yeah, the, the parking setback is, is, right, is not a beautification issue, that's a setback issue.
And, and what's the non-conformance there, sorry?
Uh, the cars should be parked ten foot from the right-of-way and currently they're parked right up, uh, to the edge of the right-of-way. And that's also what's shown on the, the site plan that we're being asked to approve. So, earlier when you, when you, when you mentioned...
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying, so I, I didn't have the ten feet mapped in my mind when I thought that it could just be angled and there would still be space. It, it seems like that's not true then.
They would have to be angled against the building, I guess, yeah.
You have sufficient amount of room in...
Can, because their traffic can pass through the ten foot, that could be the, the traffic lane that serves the...
Right.
So if you angle them to the building, then it... lane that serves the, so if you angle them to the building, then it could work. So I think that's what I'm suggesting, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to say something, which is, I would like to give maximum flexibility to the petitioner or the applicant in this situation. So if we can approve with amendments, even if they don't like them, then they can go through the appeals process you've suggested, correct?
Yeah, and to speak to that point, the note I made with regard to parking, whoever makes the motion, I would like, instead of stating exactly where that parking needs to go in the front in order to provide flexibility because of the current existing site, that the condition reads something to the effect of configure parking to meet required setback, such that that allows, that allows, and when we do that, that can be often, that can sometimes be dangerous because essentially we're delegating to staff our role of oversight. However, in this case, it does allow the applicant maximum flexibility to reconfigure their parking in such a way that makes sense for them without us dictating specifically where it needs to go because this is sort of a tricky situation.
And a specific question for staff, would the applicant be able to just expand the gravelled area and within, be in conformance with ordinance and expand the parking in that way out back?
Yes.
So at least that would be fairly low cost.
Very ready to do that.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, that's about, about if you want that parking area more organized.
So I'm going to read the notes that I've taken. So it sounds like we don't need to discuss where the curb cuts are. If we accept the site plan as is, those curb cuts are where they are, and that's where they'll stay. So whoever makes their motion, please keep these things in mind, that these are things that the board has discussed as possible conditions. Mr. Martelli brought up the idea of tanks, and we're hearing that the applicant does plan on moving those tanks. It's important to note that if the tanks are shown in a specific spot on the site plan that we approve, then they need to stay there unless they come, unless the applicant comes back for a site plan amendment. Again, speaking to Mr. Engler's concern about sort of undue burden given the current site situation, it could be possible for the board to meet Mr. Martelli's concern without putting an undue burden on the applicant and making a condition that they move the propane tanks in accordance with all pertinent laws and regulations, such that, and if we make, if we make a condition like that, the board needs to recognize the implication of that is that we're allowing them to put them anywhere that they are legally allowed to do, to put them on their site. So it sort of takes away some of our ability to cite exactly where we'd like the propane tanks, but it does, moving those tanks is, the way that's done is dictated by law anyway, so it's sort of, they can't do anything that's illegal. Yes?
Just one comment on that. At the development review meeting, the fire prevention officer did mention about the propane tanks and making sure that they had Jersey barriers around them, and it appears that they do, and the applicant has indicated that they do, and so he wanted to confirm that was the case. So if they're moved, I assume he'd also want to know where they're moved and to make sure that they're protected as well.
Okay, and so keep that in mind, if you're making a motion and you would like that to be a condition, it is, it is well within our purview to say that, that they move the tanks in accordance with all pertinent laws and regulations and upon approval of the staff, okay, so we can, we can do that. We've discussed the buffer, so it is possible for us to put a condition that there is a placement of a small vegetative buffer to include but not limited to planter boxes in order to meet the ordinance. And I think that we should shy away from requiring a specific width in this case because it's sort of a tight spot to begin with. I threw the idea of planter boxes in there only because sometimes if you omit something, it can be misconstrued that it is not allowed, and since that was something that sounded like several members felt was allowed, that might be something we'd like to keep in mind. That the, configure the front parking lot in order to meet required setbacks for parking. And finally, because there are not currently enough spaces on the site plan to meet local ordinance, that additional onsite parking be established to meet requirements of the ordinance with regard to construction and number of spaces. And if we say construction and number of spaces, it means that we're asking the applicant to put down some sort of non-purview to include reclaimed material in order to make up that parking, so that the parking meet a specific standard, but also that there be enough parking to meet the, to meet the ordinance. So those, and I hope I've captured those the way that the board intended to be captured. I think it would be good for whoever makes a motion to keep those four points in mind. So is there discussion, or does someone feel comfortable making a motion?
Mr. Carrier.
Like a motion, make a motion that we accept the site plan with the following stipulations, that the current propane be moved to a minimum safe distance as defined by our city regulations and the local fire department, making sure that there's the needed protection around the tanks to keep them from being damaged in a possible vehicle collision. And also, the placement of the proper buffer in accordance with our current regulations and the reconfiguration of the frontal parking so that it will allow the buffer to be properly placed, and that the rest of the parking be configured so that it meets the obligation of the ADA and their parking regulations to general, or to.
Can I make a friendly amendment about the vegetation, including that, another stipulation about landscaping to, and I don't forget your wording, Evan.
To include but not limited to planter boxes.
There we go.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay, there's a motion and friendly amendment, is there a second on the motion and amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Engler.
So is, is the current positioning of the propane tanks non-conformant, or is it?
No, actually, it's that I think what happens is the applicant has expressed that they would like to move them, and so we, they'd be stuck in the same situation they're stuck in now, which is because these propane tanks are present on the site plan and they're present in a very specific place, in the future, in order for them to move them, they would have to come back for a site plan review in order to amend their site plan. So by putting that in there, it allows them to move their propane tanks without having to come back.
And, so you're planning to move them anyway?
Probably, you know, the whole layout out back, I mean, they could stay where they were, but it'd probably be safer and more effective to, you know, you don't want them right in the middle, but I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, there's several reasons why I recommend moving them. One, if you bring a tractor-trailer back there, they're right in the center of a, you know, turning area, that's one. Two, if you put additional parking back there, somebody could slide into it, you know, on an icy day. So I'm just looking at some safety regulations, you know, my, from my point of view. So I would move them over to the side more, you know, and get them out of the way.
It's connected during the seduce.
Well, yeah. They're for heat, mostly for the building?
They do heat, and they run that, we have a million and a half feet of heat tray.
Oh, all right.
That's why it is.
So you don't get cold in the winter then?
Oh, it doesn't.
Thank you very much. Thank you for asking the clarifying question, I think that was very helpful. There is a motion, there's a second, a motion to approve with specific conditions. Is there any further discussion?
Ask a question about the process from here.
Absolutely.
Should this motion be accepted? So the applicant will submit an updated site plan to city staff, who will then review, and if in compliance with what we've provided as our updates, they'll approve it by city. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Will that be at the next meeting?
So historically, those site plans aren't necessarily disseminated at the next meeting, but if, if it pleases the board, we can ask that we be provided with the updated drawings, absolutely, it's well within our purview to ask. Would you, would you like that?
Yep. Because he wants to get moving on this.
Then, it's, it's highly irregular for the planning board that the chair would make a motion or interject within a motion, but seeing this, I'm going to sort of break with years of tradition here and ask for a friendly amendment to state that, within this motion, that the planning board also be provided an updated site plan.
I'm good with that. You make it, who's making the friendly amendment?
I am, which, that's why I'm saying it's highly unusual.
Is that the court construct?
No, I think after construct, I think, that's a good question.
This is more of a check, we will give you a copy from the administratively approved and the planning board's approved site plan.
Is that, is that reasonable?
It won't be coming back to you for.
No, 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 I think, they, they understand, yeah, I think it's just that we'd like to see it, okay.
Just want to make sure it's clarified for the applicant.
I apologize for not writing down who seconded that motion to begin with. You made the motion.
Who seconded?
Will you accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
He's got, he's got money tied up, he wants to get moving on this.
I know, we want to let him go.
That's good for me.
So if there's no more discussion, I'll take a vote, all those in favor of approval based on conditions. All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the proposed text amendment to Article 13 Environmental Performance Standards, Section 60-1038 Odors. This is something we worked on, I hope everyone had a chance to really dig into this. I think you'll note that Mrs. Knight did a lot of work here, and I think really took our suggestions in providing us with an updated draft that met the requirements that we set for at our last meeting. So to that end, we're going to follow the same procedure for this public hearing that we did for the last. Are we ready for our staff report?
Certainly. So just to give a brief summary, the purposes of the environmental performance standards are to ensure that no new development occurs which may have an environmental impact that could be detrimental to the city or neighboring property owners or cause nuisances directly or indirectly, and they typically apply to all non-residential uses in the city. These divisions include smoke, noise, vibrations, odors, air pollution, and electrical disturbances or interference. The current language for the odor ordinance is fairly simple, straightforward, and consists solely of these two items. The term odor threshold is defined as the minimum concentration in air of a gas, vapor, or particulate matter that can be detected by the abutters of the property in question. And B, no development in any zone may generate any odor that reaches the odor threshold measured at the lot line of the enterprise generating the odor. Based on the discussion that we had at the last planning board on June 11th, there was extensive discussion, more than an hour and a half, with several items of concern. Sorry, hold on. Specifically, there was concern around, I'm still not getting my throat back, all right, the nuisance complaints, there was a concern that there would be complaints that were nuisances in essence to eliminate a business, that there would be a need for measurable, quantifiable metrics, that violation and compliance should not be left to subjective opinions or subjective panel, and that there would be, there's further need for an observable or measurable standard to determine compliance. So with that in mind and the direction of the planning board, I did research across the country on the different mechanisms used, particularly by those jurisdictions that had recently, within the last several years, implemented marijuana ordinances and realized that this was a major problem across the country, and many jurisdictions have already handled this very successfully, primarily using metrics from measured scientific instruments called field oil factory meters. This is now a common practice and allows for measured statistics at the property line. Because jurisdictions inherently have different odor issues, from factories, from landfills, from all sorts of sources, they also have different health and safety standards, different health and environmental boards, different air quality boards, so given all the different circumstances between that and the urban and rural environments, each jurisdiction handles these things uniquely, as you would guess, even though there are general overriding standards using the oil factoring meters. And there's further statistics that show that most of the jurisdictions that implement a stringent odor control standard require more than one complaint in order to send field or code enforcement officers to that violation, with the understanding that, in some cases in the city of Portland, for instance, it takes up to 10 different property owners to complain of a odor violation in order to send out a code enforcement officer. So with that being said, we worked on this ordinance with code enforcement officers, in fact, I have included in some of the materials that I have given you a count of cases. This is essentially something included in the packet as a summary for the code, the code cases that our officers responded to and documented. So for every call that comes into the office, this is typically entered and recorded, and a log is kept, and the activity of the enforcement officer is documented. In this case, most of what we had during this time period that I'm showing this report for from January to June were for trash and debris and property maintenance. As you can imagine, through the winter, we had any number of heat or no heat violations, abandoned or unregistered vehicles, plumbing and building a residential code violations that were reported, and then we have a, another category called other, which is, you never know what you're going to get. So with that being said, I wanted to also update you on the code enforcement practices of the Economic and Community Development Department, since for the most part, I believe the consensus of the planning board from the last meeting was that odor control, odor nuisances should be handled in much the same way as any other nuisance or code enforcement issue, that this should be as systematic as any other code enforcement mechanism in the city, and that this one nuisance shouldn't be treated any differently. So with that being said, I wanted to summarize some of the additions or changes from the last ordinance. It applies to all non-residential land uses, not non-residential zones. And I want to make that clear because you may have non-residential uses in residential zones. So there could be instances where home occupation could be generating instances which would in essence be a non, could technically be right on that quasi fence of a non-residential type use. But we also have businesses, and we have homes, that are in commercial areas as well as businesses that are in residential areas. So I want to be clear that it is all non-residential land uses. I want to also make sure that we note that this odor ordinance, the way it's currently drafted, addresses notable problems, but not every passing odor. So, meeting that threshold that says, just because you, because one person complains about an odor, while we will document it as a logged complaint on a certain address, we will not necessarily respond to the first violation or the first call of complaint. So, the edits from the last version of this have somewhat been reduced in nature. We are now talking about Section 6030, 1039, which includes basically two elements. A, the objectionable odor determination and enforcement. As you walk through the ordinance, you will realize that the applicability section has been added to the entire Environmental Performance Standards Regulations because it is applicable to all. No land use, facility, or activity shall be exempt from complying with the environmental performance standards contained in this article. Chapter 1034, zoning, because of grandfathering or because of being an existing use facility or activity at the time the standards were enacted. The standards apply to all existing and future sources, land uses, facilities, and activities in the non-residential uses of the city, except as otherwise provided herein. So, that item of applicability has been moved to encompass all environmental performance standards, as is appropriate. And further, when we move into the odor section, we are retaining some of the original language. For purposes of this section, the term odor threshold is defined as the minimum concentration in air of a gas, vapor, or particulate matter that can be detected by the abutters of the property in question. No development in any non-residential use may generate any odor that reaches the odor threshold measured at the lot line of the enterprise generating the odor of a dilution to threshold DT of seven or less using a field orl factory meter. I'll get into that definition in a second. Two, whether or not an odor emission interferes with the reasonable and comfortable use and enjoyment of a property shall be measured against the objective standards of a reasonable person of normal sensitivity. The use of a field orl factory meter may be used for documentation, verification, and enforcement as needed. A measurement reading of seven DT or less shall be maintained at the property line. Three, odor observation shall be undertaken to arrive at a determination that an objectionable odor exists at the property line or beyond the property line if a public space where people live, work, or assemble is impacted. Four, if complaints are received regarding farming operations and the farm is using best management practices as outlined in state and federal standards, the right to farm MRSA Title VII, Chapter VI, Statute 153 shall prevail. So, the dilution to threshold ratio is essentially a computation used by the orl factory meter that shows the volume of carbon filtered air to the volume of odorous air as a concentrated measure. So, for instance, 50 parts per million, over 70 parts per million is an overconcentration that would yield an odor threshold right at the boundary of what would be acceptable. I believe in your packet I included the wonderful image of a nasal gazeteer, which we all enjoyed. We are looking forward to getting one of those.
Thanks. Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Is that a standard measure? Like, so that we're, you're not tied to a specific type of instrument?
Instrument. Well, that's an excellent question. Most of them use this concentration methodology. If we find that the equipment we obtain uses a different measurement, then we would amend it accordingly, but I, believe it or not, there's this whole scientific set of data using this stuff. And there are a lot of different ways of quantifying and a lot of different methodologies and equipment, but this seems to be more of a universal from a simplistic perspective that's been around since, I don't know, 2004, 2005, something like that. So, hopefully, it's, this will be sufficient. It may not be as sophisticated as some other elements or measurements, but that's an excellent question and it bears further research, but with this particular equipment, that's the measurement that's used.
I was going to hold this question until the end, but since we started, can you explain the origin of using a DT of seven or less? Was that sort of a common standard that you found? How did you arrive at that concentration?
Good. And let me see if my memory on this research is as robust as I would hope. The research basically says that, let me see if I have my notes. I have all my notes. That 90% of the, 98% of the time, you should, you should have a normal air, ambient air quality that is at least .5 in essence. 98% of the time, you should have a high air quality with low odorous concentrations. So, the idea that you're running between a, 2% of the time you might have a 50% concentration versus 100% of the time, or at least 98% of the time, having a perfect air quality concentration gives you a middle ground of seven, which seemed to be the standard used most often.
That was the most often standard that you were able to cite? Okay.
Primarily because you, you're always, there's always the possibility that there's something in the air regardless of what it is. It could be new green grass, it could be lawn mowing. I mean, I can smell someone mowing grass, I don't know, miles away sometimes. So, there's always going to be something in the air that will change the concentration of a perfect carbon filtered air unit. That 2% of the time, it's going to be, you know, at 50% concentration. So, this seemed to be a reasonable standard that's been used quite frequently.
Thank you. Mr. Martelli?
We're not looking at inside the building, we're looking outside the building.
At the property line.
And are we looking at any kind of wind speed or anything like that factored into this?
No, I mean, that's, one of the, the, this.
Second, second part of that, all right, before you answer that, is, are we looking at a constant flow of smell? In other words, like, I grew up near a coffee factory, and seven days a week, when the air came from the west, we could smell coffee all day long. So, are we going to factor that in too?
Well, they're both excellent questions. The way the gaz, the nasal orl factoring meter works is like a, much like a breathalyzer. Your, the actions of your nose, of breathing in, bring the air into the filter. So, it doesn't work unless you are, you are, you know, bringing that air into the filter. So, that's, that's one factor, to answer your first question.
Yep.
The second is, if we're running into a situation like a canning factory, or a Purina factory, or a fish factory, or a coffee plant, which, believe me, in this research, a lot of this stuff was generated around, those guys are constantly breaking that smell boundary. There's no, they don't have the filters in place to keep that at bay. And that's why, when the wind blows a certain way, you're going to smell it because it's always out there in the air. In this case, what we'll be doing is using that measurement, and maybe it's something that we get repeat calls and, and, "No, you only, you have to come in in the morning," or "It's only in the evening." Well, if it's inconsistent, you know, we have to use best judgment, and we have to, we have to document whether or not it is repeated and constant. That should be addressed. If it's repeated and constant, it needs to be addressed. If it is an occasional smell that's not constant or consistent with changes in pattern or wind, then, then no.
I don't want us to get into the meteorological.
Right. No, and it's, it's one of these, it's one of these things that you have to use, but that's why that we have the statement around best judgment and reasonable judgment.
Yeah.
But something like the coffee factory, you know, you go around a city, you can smell that no matter where you go, someplace, and it's bad. It just might not be in your neighborhood that day.
Yep.
I had a question about the, is the field orl fact meter specific enough to be able to isolate a single source of odorous air, or will it combine the volume of odorous air from multiple different sources? So, if we get a complaint about a specific factory or business, but it's, this tool is calculating odorous air from another different type of source that's nearby, are we able to be that specific or not?
Well, and I forget where it is, but it should be in this text somewhere. It talks about being able to, to, you have to be able to locate the source. It has to be a definable source area, and it may be further in the administration. But you have to be able to detect exactly, you have to be able to detect the source, the origin of the source.
There should be a distance from the source to wherever the complaint person is.
It's, that is the lot line.
You might have to be sniffing around to see when the meter goes closer to the, to the source.
Well, as defined in the proposed ordinance, it's the lot line. So, for someone, that might be 50 feet, and for someone else, that might be 250 feet. Any further questions? Are you able to continue with the air?
I don't know where I was. Where was I? Let's see, we were just talking about the dilution to threshold ratio, correct?
Correct.
So, the way the ordinance is currently written, when we move to administration and enforcement. B, the code enforcement officer and their, and/or their official designee of the city of Auburn shall administer and enforce this article. The CEO will follow Section 2, 639, which is the code enforcement citation section that I circulated previously, in determining time limits for corrective actions based on the level of risk or nuisance posed by the issue. One, upon receiving three different complaints within any seven-day period, the CEO shall investigate the issue. If the CEO detects and/or the operator indicates that management provisions installed within the facility are not being followed, the CEO shall provide verbal notice of violation with instructions to comply with the standards within 10 business days, and to inform the officer of efforts or completion within that time. The officer may use electronic meters or devices to measure and quantify the issue for comparative and/or enforcement purposes. I highlighted the seven-day period because in discussion and review by our assistant city manager and police officers, they mentioned that there could be repeated violations based on crop yield or crop rotation, that there may be only a odor for a week or so every several months. That is a constant emission. And so, I'm offering as a potential caveat that upon receiving three different complaints, we use that period as opposed to with any, within any seven-day period, so that we retain documentation. If we receive three different complaints over any time period on a property, we will investigate. So, I'm highlighting that with the notation that we could possibly strike that seven-day period if we follow that other line of thought.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm. Of course.
Because the department is used to receiving complaints, because they receive complaints now, how does the code enforcement department define an individual complaint? So, if I call three times today, is that three separate complaints, or am I a single complainant, so I'm a single complaint? Okay. And that's, that's the policy that they follow now? Okay.
Yeah. And I, so I'm glad you brought that up, because one section I wanted to review for you is the code enforcement generally, how we process code enforcement. Because ultimately, this ordinance is as much about that as it is about defining the odor in general. So, how we currently operate is very geared towards the nature of the complaint. And based on the nature of the complaint and the risk associated, or the hazard associated with the problem, they respond accordingly. So, if it's an immediate risk or nuisance, there's zero to, zero hours to 24. I mean, sometimes we, you know, a pipe breaks, there's a fire, we have to close down a business because of a fire or a water disruption, or a health and safety issue, or sanitation issue, a rat-infested building, or a dumpster that's overflowing and is all over the, blowing all over the streets. So, we look at short-term risk or nuisance, and we look at long-term risk or nuisance as we assess each of the complaints that we respond to. So, if a apartment building or a home is without heat, that's an immediate risk in the winter. That's something we respond to right away, and we're jumping on it and getting out there. If it's something like a trash complaint, it may take us a day, depending on the load of work and the severity of the issue. Our code enforcement officers are pretty busy and are multitasked. Most of them are dealing with building permits and building issues, or they're dealing with sanitation and health inspecting our food businesses, our restaurants. So, they wear multiple hats, and they're constantly busy, and will respond and work with the businesses according to the issue. So, we try to work with those businesses as soon as we realize the problem, and depending on the nature and severity of it, we try to act within the right timeframe. So, if we, a code enforcement officer finds that there are five children in a two-bedroom apartment with no smoke alarms and faulty wiring, they'll try to get right on that and make them get a fire alarm and get those things installed right away. So, that, that's the way we try to respond and work with the property owners or the business owners to make sure that they can come into compliance within a reasonable timeframe. If they cannot, or are loath to respond to their violation, then we, we give that written notice and are specific. Typically, we try to give a written notice regardless so that everything's clear and documented, but the timeframe that people have to bring their issue into compliance may vary based on that risk or nuisance that I just outlined. So, these are in person, and the citations are as follows. They're fairly minor at first, and they move forward as there is further delinquency or lack of response to the problem. And at a certain point of the subsequent citations, civil action is brought to recoup those fines, particularly if they have not responded or paid their citation fees. So, you'll notice within the two or three pages, the code enforcement section of our municipal code covers a wide area and is general, but, but the spirit of that is to work with the property owner to resolve the issue so that citations and fines and penalties don't have to be assessed. Any questions about our code enforcement practices or policies?
I have a quick question about the count of cases, figure that you provided with us. Does that represent a typical caseload for the six-month period?
You know, after our meeting, the next day, I went down and out, talked to our code enforcement officer, one of them, and I said, "Hey, can you, you know, give me a summary of this?" She goes, "Yep." Plugged it out of our intergov computer, and we can, we can add to this so that we keep a better log. In these cases, in this summary, these are, these are cases where the code enforcement officer went out and did corrective action and wrote a report. These are not necessarily all calls or complaints that we received.
That was my question. Thank you.
Can we get an update of this every month?
I don't see why not.
This is, this is handy.
Yes, it is very interesting. It is very interesting. And they are more than willing to add to this, particularly, the only issue is, of course, this is generated by input into a program. So, in order to make sure we are documenting calls or complaints on a property, we would need to make sure we are not just entering the data of a call or that's a complaint that's typically just taken on a notepad. that's typically just taken on a notepad and researched, but that it's actually entered into the computer for filing and responding. So if there are no further questions about the general process of code enforcement, I'll move on to the rest of the ordinance. It's fairly quick after the first effort to work with the property owner. This is the first response, three different complaints, investigating the issue, working with the facility, defining the problem, trying to understand what the violation and how it can be addressed, and giving them a timeframe to work within that 10-day period. So, two, the second phase of this, if complaints persist and/or the issues are not resolved after the 10-day period described, a written notice of violation as specified, with the requirement that the owner-operator prepare a mitigation plan that meets the requirements of this ordinance, along with a timetable for implementation within 30 days. We typically give businesses with longer-term issues 30 days to comply, particularly if it's going to involve an investment of some form, and investment and installation of some form. If the installed mitigations fail to bring the facility into compliance, a specialist may be required to design a remedy, and the city may use contracted staff or peer review escrow fees to review the mitigation plan. And a mitigation plan, in fact, I was asked about this by a potential business for odors, and a mitigation plan can be anything. Odors are going to be very dependent on the building, the ventilation system, the facilities, the size, the scope, the nature of the odor emissions, how they're contained currently, the materials in the building, the filtration systems that are available, the distance from other structures, the insulation in the walls and the ceilings, the windows. It's going to be very unique, so saying that there is a standard mitigation plan for odors like any other mitigation plan is going to be unique to the facility and the business. Three, if the operator has not submitted the required report or made efforts to comply within 45 days, the CEO shall issue a second written notice of violation and assess additional fines. So at this point, we are looking at 45 days of the operator not attempting to comply and not working with the city to resolve the matter. If the operator has not submitted the required report, or if the operator has not provided substantial evidence of attempted compliance within 60 days of the first written notice of violation, the city manager may consider temporarily suspending the business license if a business license was issued under the provisions of Chapter 14, Article 11. In addition to issuing further citations and penalties under Chapter 2, under Chapter 2, if the issue, complaints, or matter remains unresolved or addressed by the owner-operator within 90 days of the written notice of violation, the city manager may ask the city council to permanently revoke the business license and/or further penalties and citations will be issued until the matter is resolved. So this is trying to wrap a final window of action based on inaction on the part of the property owner. If they show efforts to comply and are working towards complying, none of these factors come into play. We often take several months to work with a business owner as needed without issuing citations or penalties or going to this level. It's more a matter of the efforts and the genuine efforts by the owner or the business operator to try to meet the ordinance. We would only go to these efforts in a code enforcement case if there's no apparent movement by the owner-operator to comply in any way, shape, or form. The sum of the environmental performance standards is then wrapped into the Authorization, Administration, and Severability, which essentially refers back to the state's granting of the municipalities' rights and responsibilities regarding public health, safety, and welfare. So at this juncture, the staff is asking for your final comments or recommendations regarding the current draft of the odor ordinance and environmental performance standards, and hopefully a recommendation on some form to move to city council.
Excellent. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank staff. I think we can all see the hard work that Mrs. Knight put in in paring down what was a lengthy and cumbersome ordinance directed specifically at marijuana, marijuana-related businesses into an ordinance which better fits with the rest of our ordinance, while addressing some of the major concerns we had. I, for one, was quite happy when I looked at this. I would be willing to take the Assistant City Manager's suggestion and remove seven days. Outside of that, I think this was quite well-crafted, and I think addressed most of our concerns. So having said that, I'll open it up to discussion.
I have one quick question, which is, what is the cost of a field ofactometer?
They're generally a couple thousand bucks or less.
And is that within our city budget to purchase one, and so as to?
Well, yeah, I think just the fees for one business license would more than cover it.
Okay. Thank you.
I was very pleased to read the new draft, so thanks very much for all your hard work. I think that this is an excellent ordinance to be sitting along, and I would be comfortable with removing the "within seven-day" period language due to the intermittency of many types of odors, not just marijuana crop odors, and the fact that we should be counting longer than that. I mean, yeah.
I agree. Comments?
We've got a research measurement standard, a comprehensive enforcement, and eliminate the seven-day period. I'm happy with it.
Any comment?
Completely happy with it.
Mr. Martelli?
I just don't want to see the farmer being, you know, tied into this.
Well, I was quite happy to see that our feedback regarding explicitly noting that the right to farm exists, not implicitly allowing people to understand that it existed somewhere.
Because they've been doing a process for hundreds of years.
Right. So I was quite happy to see that Mrs. Knight put that in there explicitly.
I'm also in agreement with the proposed changes and also agree with removing the reference to seven-day period.
Mr. Duvall?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's my first look at it, looks good to me, but I would remove the seven-day period as well.
All right. At this point, it sounds like there's quite a bit of agreement amongst the board, and I'd be seeking a motion.
Make a motion that we submit our recommendation to the city council with the, of this drafted ordinance, with the removal of the seven-day and the inclusion of the, just a general time period, and give them our recommendation as a positive.
Okay, so there's a motion to send a favorable recommendation with removal of seven-day period. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me do this now, all right. Is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, so. Be looking for this.
Happy dance.
Yeah, well, I think this, I'm going to pause the meeting for a minute, and after the lengthy discussion we had last time, I think the brevity of the discussion we had this time is doing great part to the work done by staff on this. I think you did a wonderful job. This is amazing. We will now be moving on to miscellaneous items. Miscellaneous A, overview of the Shoreland Ordinance and State Update Requirements. This is something that I'm sure Mrs. Knight will explain is something we've actually have been asked to look at for quite some time, but we are finally getting our feet back under us after sort of putting aside the egg zone just for a bit, so we have time to tackle some of our other responsibilities.
Thank you. I'm always hesitant to wade into the Shoreland zoning ordinance. However, we have been tasked with moving forward with this, and in fact, this has been on the books since 2012, in terms of the state acting on this and then requesting municipalities to move forward as well. So with that, I apologize in advance because I have still more handouts. So what I am handing out is first, a copy of our existing timber harvesting ordinance, which is Section 60-1003, which is a section of the SLO, or Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. The second item I'm handing out is a Quick Information Sheet 25 from the Bureau of Forestry, which tries to summarize a fairly complicated forestry-type language set of policies and standards. It tries to keep this fairly brief and simple, but if you are a forester, you get it. If you're anybody else, chances are, you don't. But we're going to make an attempt. The third item I'm handing out is a simple profile from DEP on clearing vegetation in the shoreline zone. And the reason why I'm sharing both of these is that there is a, while there's a difference between clearing vegetation in the shoreline zone generally, the timber harvesting ordinance is obviously geared more towards the forester and the forestry industry and how it impacts our streams, watersheds, lakes, and rivers. So that being said, the goals of the shoreline zone throughout apply to both timber harvesting and vegetation in general. So just to take you back a little bit, the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act came about in the late 1980s, and no doubt in a response to the massive development around our lakes and streams and the coast. And it's comprised, it generally is comprised of all land areas within 250 horizontal distance of the normal high water line of any great pond or river. And the normal high water line is what you can see from a visual change once the water has been risen by our runoff and snow melt to where you see the change during our dry season. So typically, there's a change in vegetation and a visual mark on rocks, trees, and vegetation. So the upland edge of a coastal wetland, it includes our wetlands, including all areas affected by tidal action, upland edge of defined freshwater wetlands, so all of our wetlands that are defined as freshwater, and all land areas within 75 feet horizontal distance of the normal high water line of certain streams. So in fact, our water bodies, for the most part, are protected by the Shoreland Zoning Act. The intent of the law is to protect water quality, wildlife habitat, wetlands, archaeological sites, historic resources, commercial fishing, maritime industries, and to conserve shore cover, public access, natural beauty, and open spaces. And it does this by controlling land uses and placement of structures within the shoreline The enforcement mechanisms, and all of the reason why the Shoreland Ordinance is so long, is that the enforcement mechanism seeks to control water pollution, protect fish-spawning grounds, bird and wildlife habitats, to protect buildings and lands from flooding and accelerated erosion, to protect historic resources, fishing, maritime industries, freshwater and coastal wetlands, controlled building sites, placement of structures and land uses, conserve shore cover, and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, conserve natural beauty and open space, and anticipate and respond to the impacts of development on the shoreline areas. So obviously, it's fairly comprehensive, and it has many goals and objectives, and with that comes some complexity. In all my years of planning and reading codes and ordinances, the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance in Maine is one of the most complex, and primarily, it's complex because it relies on vegetation. The primary premise around the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance circles around vegetation, and it looks at everything from the duff ground cover to saplings to the mature tree stands, and documents them accordingly. Clearing of vegetation is prohibited within 75 feet of the normal high water line of a great pond zone for resource protection. Timber harvesting is also prohibited within 75 feet of the normal high water line of a great pond. To provide for screening between development activities and the water, cleared openings are prohibited within a strip extending 75 feet. A well-distributed stand of vegetation must remain. There shall be no cleared opening greater than 250 square feet in the forest canopy. A single-foot path not to exceed six feet in width, as measured between the tree trunks and/or shrub stems, is allowed for accessing the shoreline, provided that a cleared line of sight to the water through the buffer strip is not created, which essentially means, if you're going to have a path from your home to the water, it better not be in a straight line, and it better be buffered as you tack back and forth through the trees. Natural ground, duff, saplings, and mature canopy are part of this composition because only through those multiple components can you keep all nutrients on site, and that protects water quality. It also protects the visual buffers needed for plants, animals, and birds. So it's a complex system, but just planting grass or putting down mulch does not keep nutrients on site. You have to have multiple sources sucking up the nutrients and providing areas and cavities for the diversity that a canopy will provide that requires different nutrients. So the reason why this is a fairly complicated ordinance, and why it's one of the most complicated I've encountered, is because it actually seeks to create a point system for tree covers. These dots represent different types of trees based on their width and diameter. And essentially, when you have a property on the shoreline, you should have a grid of 25 by 50 that measures and documents the coverage. In this case, the black dots symbolize a two-inch diameter tree, which only gives you one point. This striped one is a four-inch diameter tree, which gives you two points. The blue one is an eight-inch diameter, wait, is that 12? I can't see. Eight to 12-inch diameter, which gives you four, and then this larger guy is 12 inches or greater, which gives you eight points. So this would be potentially your lot currently. You could thin your property to this density, but it's based on a point system. So as you'll see in the notations here, some municipalities have a point system based on a 25 by 25-foot plot rather than a 25 by 50-foot plot, but those cases are required. It goes on a point system. Is the cutting of vegetation less than two inches in diameter limited? Yes. State law prohibits new cleared openings from being created within the buffer area. If removal of vegetation less than two inches in diameter will create cleared openings, enough vegetation must be retained to prevent the creation of such openings. Also, if five saplings less than two inches in diameter do not exist in a 25 by 50-foot plot, no woody stems less than two inches in diameter can be removed until five saplings are recruited into the plot. And the reason why I'm going through this is to give you a sense of how complicated this ordinance is, and the nuances involved in vegetation as a whole, and the timber harvesting ordinance is no less complicated.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the intent of this exercise, is the intent of this exercise to craft a local ordinance under home rule such that our ordinance meets the intent of the state statute but is at least as restrictive as the state statute?
The, well, the intent is that the municipalities and the towns actually implement state law. Regardless of how you do it, they want state law to be implemented.
So state law regarding all this does exist?
This was a state law adopted 20... This was a state law adopted twenty-twelve and updated in twenty-
So our task would essentially be to write state, to write ordinance that is in line with state statute and under home rule as restrictive or more restrictive than the state statute? Yes? Am I, more to the point, are there gaps in the state statute that local municipalities are required to fill because they are not filled in the state statute with regard to, do you understand my question?
The, no. So here's, so in certain cases, for instance, there's a role for the planning board. In our current ordinance, as you'll notice, that there are instances where an applicant could potentially come to the planning board for the planning board to render a decision, and I'm trying to find that exact reference. And it may have to do with culverts or water crossings or stream crossings where, let's see if I'm finding something where the planning board actually has any say.
So I will get directly to my point, I guess. Understanding the basic nature of the agricultural zones such that we felt we could provide minimal or basic input on revision of ordinance with regard to that zone was a lengthy process. I will speak for myself and not the members of the board in this instance, but I feel much less prepared to take any action with regard to timber harvesting or vegetation clearing within the, along the shoreline than I did weighing in on the agricultural zone. So the point of my question being, what is the benefit to us in trying to craft a local ordinance in order to meet state goals as opposed to adopting the use of the state statute, which governs that which we are trying to craft?
Not much. The only, and I'll say this for multiple reasons. If you look at the content of what's, so here's the things that are covered in the standards for timber harvesting. The state's standards cover, they literally cover standards for all of these items. And by that, I mean, they are very specific about how you treat slash. They are very specific about skid trails, yards, and equipment operations, and setbacks for such items, about roads and access roads, and about recovery of those roads or restoration of those roads. They're very specific about crossing water bodies and the ways you cross water bodies and what permits you need to cross water bodies. They're very specific, as you noted in one of these items, about the percentage of this grid that has to be left, a forty percent, forty percent of the trees can be, where does it, it says harvesting of no more than forty percent of the total volume of trees, four point five inches DBH or greater in any ten-year period, or is permitted. Or the residual stand must contain an average basal area of at least sixty square feet per acre of woody vegetation greater than or equal to one inch DBH, of which forty square feet per acre must be greater than or equal to four point five inches DBH. I'm not a forester. I wouldn't be hard-pressed to enforce this, implement it, and determine whether or not someone is actually meeting this standard or not.
So under home rule, though, any standard we create in ordinance must be as restrictive or more restrictive than the standard demonstrated there? So am I hearing-
We're responsible for implementing this. We are responsible for implementing the shoreline ordinance unless we give, period, unless we give the state or any other body that right and rule. And the way the current, our current ordinance reads, if you look at page two of the timber harvesting ordinance, for instance, in number two, it says timber harvesting operations exceeding the forty percent limitation in subsection B one above may be allowed by the planning board upon a clear showing, including a forest management plan signed by a Maine licensed professional, that an exception is necessary for good forest management and will be carried out in accordance with the purposes of the SLO district. The planning board shall notify the commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection of each exception allowed within fourteen days of the planning board's decision. So this is an attempt to retain that home rule. However, this isn't something that we, to my knowledge, have ever really been involved in because we don't have the knowledge or experience or expertise to implement or enforce or even, I mean, we're not foresters.
So am I right in assuming that the only benefit to the city for us to write local ordinance as opposed to adopt the regulations outlined in state statute is that we could, while maintaining a stringent level of regulation, simplify the way that those regulations are described in such a way that they are either more easily understood or more easily enforced? Is that sort of our-
I'm not sure we'd be capable of doing that because-
I am quite confident that we are not.
Because, I mean, if you read the one, this is supposed to be a simple thing right here, this little, you know, sheet that I just read from. Unless you can go through a forest and say that this is forty percent and this is the DBH of that forty percent and it meets-
Are there members of the board that are in disagreement and think that we are really sort of qualified to craft such a document?
Well, one thought is, so it's clear that we're responding to the state, not some kind of organic, something going on here in the city of Auburn.
Right.
So is it true, Mrs. Knight, that this final packet you gave us that says, what about other land uses? Timber harvesting does not include clearing land for development. So we're not talking about people changing their own private property in the shoreline zone?
Well, and this is where it gets a little tricky.
Do you see?
Yes, because we're still back to the, as soon as you clear land, you're still left with the same requirements as the shoreline ordinance for vegetation clearing. So it might not follow into timber harvesting because it's not a logging company, let's say, that's clearing the land. It's a developer who may be using a logging company to help them. But if you're clearing it for the purposes of development, you still have to meet the vegetation removal requirements of the shoreline zone if you are within those two hundred and fifty feet, a hundred feet, seventy-five feet of those water bodies. You can create an area for your building, but you have to keep that density of vegetation, those patterns, to meet the ordinance.
I would like to ask an additional question. It's my understanding that this is before us because city manager Creighton received communication from the state expressing that it was their opinion that our current shore zone ordinance was not in compliance with state law and regulation?
So the letter, you did receive a copy of that letter and essentially, in twenty-twelve, they adopted, the state adopted new regulations and essentially requested each jurisdiction to state whether they were going to be using the state, the new state standards, and all those enforcement mechanisms and regulations within the state standard, or adopt their own, or work out a hybrid, which is essentially to say, we're going to adopt the state standards in their entirety, but we're going to work out some kind of agreement where we do our own enforcement and we do our own, you know, where we have some home rule. And that requires a signed agreement between the state and the planning director, let's say, about who's going to be responsible for what. So the state asked us to do that. The state's trying to get this legislation implemented by all jurisdictions, and this is their way to do it, to essentially say, look, every jurisdiction, you need to be clear about what you're doing. If you're going to continue managing this on your own, you need to follow, you need to be able to enforce it, and you need to be able to, the state will not further help you unless you are following their standards.
So at the risk of overstepping, or rather, stepping on members' toes, it's clear that the board does not necessarily feel qualified to review these standards and then write our own versions, that we would be confident that we would be meeting the state's request. So that essentially leaves two options, as I hear them described by you. Either we delegate authority on this matter to the state or we utilize a hybrid system. My concern with the hybrid system being that, maybe I misheard, it sounded as though staff was not confident that the city was well-prepared to enforce such standards.
Yeah, so they're essentially asking us, they've given us three options.
Right.
Option one is the defer the regulation administration enforcement to the Bureau of Forestry, repeal this existing section of our current code, in which case, the Bureau of Forestry, as soon as they receive a permit from a forester, they take on the administration and enforcement of the shoreline zone and timber harvesting. We're out of it. Option two, we adopt all the state language incorporating into our existing ordinance. We repeal and replace, including the extensive definitions, with right now, this section of timber harvesting in the shoreline zone is about twenty-four pages for timber harvesting alone. It requires that we have identical code, so it's the exact language, and we can, we can work out an arrangement to jointly administer it, but there has to be a written agreement about who's doing what. And any changes that the state makes, we have to, in turn, turn around and adopt as well. So that's the second option. And as you already stated, the third option essentially says there's no real estate assistance and we do all the enforcement and administration and need to-
So this is the point at which I fear I might step on other people's toes because, quite frankly, I'm going to go out on a limb and speak for the entire board at this point and then ask their opinion after. It's my impression that the best way for the board to move forward is to abandon option three and to ask staff to develop a sort of benefit matrix to either adopting the first option or the second option so that we could review those and then make a decision as to which one of those two options we think is most beneficial to the city. But at this point, I'm hearing from my members that option three is really not on the table. So having said that, I would like feedback from the board on that. I'll start at my far right and we'll go in turn.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we definitely need additional information. I don't know if that would come from staff or if we need to hear from the DACF or, you know, with staff available as well to provide input. But I definitely think that we need to have a little bit more information about the pros and cons, what's being enforced now, what kind of a caseload does that represent, you know, what would change if we were to adopt and have the state take over enforcement?
I don't see any verbiage on invasive plants also on this because along our shorelines, we have a lot of invasive, so.
Anything that isn't a natural species that's been planted after the fact on the shoreline and it's not part of the natural diverse, natural saplings that are produced from the normal pattern are considered invasive.
Yeah. It's my understanding that they don't count towards that percentage or whatever. Yeah? Well, I guess we don't know. See, that's part of the problem. All right. Mr. Carrier?
I agree completely with abandoning option three. And short of some kind of guarantee from staff, the city, the council, or anybody else about us being able to develop staff that are capable of administering this, I would actually really rather vote for one and let the state handle it because they have the staff and they know how to do this. Something that's improperly done or is missed here locally can have an adverse effect on an area. And having felt that personally within the last two years, I think that the state is better equipped to handle this problem. And doing it that way relieves us of the burden of trying to develop something and trying to pay for something that we don't even have an idea of what may be required of us.
Yeah, to see no state assistance regarding a complex state legislation is a red flag to me. I'm leaning towards option one, but if city staff is willing to do a compare and contrast of option one and two, I'd be open to exploring that.
Mr. Engler?
I agree with Mr. Carrier and what a lot of other members have expressed. Option three does not seem like a very good option for the city at this point. Option two seems like it, it seems to me that that might appeal to types of municipalities that Auburn is not one of, such as a city or town where commercial forestry is actually a little bit more important economically. So option one is appealing. I think we, as a planning board, really need to understand, and hopefully staff can help us with this, what some of the potential costs are and what types of constituencies in the city of Auburn could be negatively affected by this. And I'm also, my head's going to when we had folks from the Department of Agriculture come and inform us about Maine farming agriculture, and what if we could get a presentation from the Department of Forestry to educate us as well?
That's certainly, something I can, I could certainly try to do. I know they're busy this time of year, but they are trying to get this adopted, so I can check on that. I will say that in studying these and the writings that we received and talking with someone from DEP on this, it became clear that really option one and two are very close, primarily because I think they were trying to give communities options. And they're very similar for a reason, and primarily it's because both of those require you adopt essentially the state code as is. The only difference is with two, you do have to adopt that code, those twenty-four pages in their entirety, into your own ordinance, make them your own, and not just have this state run that section of your code. So the other part of that is it does give you the option to, so it means we take it through the complete process here locally. And it would also require that, you can't turn around and substitute things. Public hearing, someone says, well, I don't like the way this definition's written and I don't like the way this paragraph is written. There's no negotiating on that. It's as it is in its entirety. It's, you don't make it your own, you adopt theirs. The administration and enforcement of that then can be worked out. If a municipality, and I agree with Mr. Engler, that essentially, this is more, this is written for those municipalities that really want to have much more input into their forest management. And while we do have a lot of tree growth and I get probably notifications from the state once every couple of months where there's a twenty-four acres that are being cleared and sixty acres being cleared, I don't know what to do with them. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not the forest ranger to go out and verify some forest management plan and look and see whether or not this is within three hundred acre drainage basin of the great stream. So from an administrative perspective and an enforcement perspective, we do have ongoing clearing of large swaths of forest, twenty-four, I think the largest I've seen is like a hundred and forty acres or something of that size within the resource protection areas of our zoning ordinance. But- But we, as a staff, don't have the people, we don't have the money, the time, or the skill set to manage a forest program, and we would be relying on the state to manage these things for us in any case. So.
So, I think it's reasonable to, at this point, put this aside for now and provide the following feedback to staff, that it appears that to the board, option one, allowing the state to maintain and manage these rules, appears to be preferable. However, many members would like additional information specific to option two and the feasibility of implementing option two at the municipal level here in Auburn. Yes, Mr. Carrier?
I'm reading through this letter front to back, and I don't see anything about this being, you know, this is a one-time shot, we're going to sign away our rights. If we choose item one, we're signing away our rights forever. Having the amount of timber that we do in the municipality, if something came along that suddenly we were developing and people were wanting the timber, I would like to have the option to be able to drop back to number two and say, "Now, wait a minute, we want to, we want to add to this to benefit us." And I think that in that type of situation, if we have the ability to go, then I would be much happier.
Right, so I think that speaks to the need for additional information as to whether or not that's a reasonable option for us. Does the board feel comfortable leaving that as our final note for tonight and direction to staff? Does staff feel comfortable in understanding what the board is asking for?
I think so. It was kind of challenging to get information on this and these options. I believe there's not much more they're going to be able to add, but I do know that, like any ordinance, it can be amended, and we can always choose different options. The point that the state's trying to make is that we need to act. We haven't acted since this was, since the state requested the municipalities act since 2012. So, they want to see where we stand, they want to make sure we are implementing the state's standards and protecting our streams and rivers and lakes. So, I will come back with more information, as much as I can get, but we'll see.
And what I'm hearing is specific to, and this would be speaking to different departments of the city, reaching out to the city manager so that he can reach out to city council. What is the feasibility that we would develop, for instance, a forester position that would be, you know, right, I understand, I understand, but I think it's important for us to not like conjecture about whether or not we can do it, but really have realistic information about. I think the sense is we all believe that that would be difficult, but I think we need to have concrete information in front of us stating yes or no with regard to that before we can really sort of take that off the table.
Okay.
May I add two specific questions?
Absolutely, Mr. Engler.
To put a fine point on it, if it's possible to ask someone at the Bureau of Forestry, what are some example municipalities that have opted for two, and what are some of the powers that they retain?
Well, and I think this is where I can give you one right off the bat. I did ask for an example of jurisdiction that did two, and I don't think they retained much, but I can find that explicitly. But the community in question is a town that has a lot of forestry.
Okay. And my second question is, if we select option one and invite the state to come in and regulate forest harvesters in the city of Auburn, what will change for those parties? So, versus what they have to do now when they want to take down 50 acres, how will it be different when we invite the state in?
It's a good question. And I think partially it has to do with the challenge that the state has in oversight of any project, but you'll always have a forester go out if there's a complaint or an issue, but I can see what I can find out around that.
Thank you. Any other specific questions? All right. Next, under miscellaneous, it says future agenda items and upcoming meetings. So, I...
Can I make a few announcements?
Yes, absolutely.
While you gather your papers and switch gears. All of you have been invited to a joint meeting with city council that's to last approximately 30 minutes on the 15th, which is Monday, of this following week. There is a planning board training that is scheduled for July 30th at 4:30, I believe it's in...
Bethel.
Bethel, yes. So if you are still interested in going to that, please sign up for that through MMA or let us know and we can sign you up. The city will pay for that training. I encourage everyone to go to that. It's four hours, I think they feed you, you know, it's not a bad evening.
Sign me up. Sign me up.
I thought you already signed up. You haven't signed up?
No.
All right, well, I guess we'll back to that. All right. Another announcement, Court Street study. We are going to have our first public meeting on August 1st at 6:00 PM in the community room. This Court Street study is an alternatives analysis to improve walkability and complete streets, balancing transportation throughput with all other modes. And the first meeting of three will be on August 1st, and that meeting will be informational. The problem statement will look over the number of crashes, the traffic volumes, other conflicts, we'll be getting input. We'll have breakout sessions to get suggestions, comments, problems, challenges into the study. A second meeting will be in the fall, with the project concluding by December, with an alternatives analysis and suggestions for short and long-term solutions. This study also encompasses the section from Court Street on Turner to Hampshire. The segment of Turner Street is fairly important, there's high volume, and there's a lot of traffic crossing the street, pedestrian traffic, as well as obviously vehicular. Just another update, we had an application that, it was not necessarily an application, it came to us from the D E P looking for some noise information in regards to a business that was approved in our jurisdiction that we share with Poland. M.B. Bark was approved as a site plan and development plan project in, I think, the late 90s?
Yes.
Oh, we struck a bell there. Essentially, they're changing their mix. Megan, do you want to, here. Oh, I have a summary of this so that you have an understanding. Essentially, they're changing their operation, the majority of which is in Poland, but because they're not changing their configuration or their actual operations within the city of Auburn, we don't necessarily rule on it, the town of Poland does. And they, their planning board approved this project, it went through extensive D E P review. They are expanding their operations to include a number of items, including the recycling of asphalt shingles, grinding them into construction materials, and a variety of other items. They have been reviewed extensively by D E P and have received a fill permit for the wetlands from the Corps of Engineers for their expansion. But I wanted to let you know that this had occurred. It was very sudden, the only way we heard about it was a D E P researcher trying to get further information on our noise contours in that area for their grinding equipment.
Excellent.
Take it away.
So, to the end, I have a list of things here. Okay, so, I will start, as Mrs. Knight pointed out, we are having a joint workshop meeting on July 15th, which is next Monday, with the city council. Slated for the agenda at this point is a small discussion of the ag zone, and I've asked specifically that we be able to talk with the city council and ask them what metrics they plan on using as we move forward. So, the board developed its criteria that we decided we were going to use to measure any changes against, and so I thought it would be helpful for us to discuss where the city council feels and what their priorities are at. That way, we can, as we move forward, it's always helpful if both bodies understand where the other is at, that's sort of open, and communication is important in that process. The other thing that is on the agenda already is looking at the agricultural advisory committee and what the makeup of that committee should look like, and whether or not the planning board wants to advocate for at least one or two representatives on that, or in what capacity that advisory board will serve and under whom, and so on and so forth. So that will be part of the discussion. And then I have miscellaneous. I myself would like to add a discussion of making a regular joint meeting at least once or twice a year with the council. That's sort of a priority of mine. And I'd like to pause, and I'll give you a second to think about, what are some things that individual members of the board might have that they would like to add to the miscellaneous? I think it's important, we don't often get to have these joint meetings with the city council, and I want to make sure that all the members get a chance to voice any concerns or bring up any topics that they think are important. So, I'll give you, I'll give you a minute to sort of collect your thoughts. I know I threw this one at you, and then I guess if we feel comfortable, we'll begin with Mr. Duval and just sort of things that you think of. And if you think of things in the meantime, I think it's fair to say that you can forward them to Audrey. However, keep in mind that the agenda will be set by either Thursday or Friday, so, you know, tomorrow is great, you know, Friday morning might be, you might have to hope that we'll entertain it during the meeting, so. Is there anything that is of interest to you? No?
Well, I think eventually it would be nice to hear a report out on the strategic planning process and where that sits, although the meeting on Monday is only 30 minutes long, and I don't think there would be time to include that.
Well, you know, I think, I think it doesn't hurt to put agenda items on there, even if we don't get to them, because simply by putting them down, it demonstrates that it's an important topic to the board, and that even if we don't get to it, that it's something that's on our radar. So, don't be afraid to add something, even if you think we won't get to it.
I'd like to see a couple of times a year with the council for one. Two, I'd also like to go back to the comprehensive plan and see what our planning's for development and where over the next 10 years, so, for housing, industrial, and whatever.
Mr. Carrier?
I'd actually advocate for maybe another meeting or two with the council, especially through the development of the strategic plans, so that we can be kept abreast of everything that's happening, because where that comes over to our lane of business, it'd be better for us to have some kind of input and/or ability to bring it back to the planning board so that we can, you know, better meet our job requirements.
Hesitant to make a suggestion for a meeting that I won't attend.
Okay, I understand.
But, you know, I do recall us reviewing and having discussions about the C I P, capital improvement plans for the city. We haven't seen that in quite some time. Perhaps it may be beneficial to revisit and review and discuss.
Yep. That would be good.
Mr. Engler?
I have nothing to add.
Right, excellent. And again, I think it's important that we take this opportunity, it's a rare opportunity, if there are things that are important to individual members of the board, they're essentially important to the board, because it means that, my assumption is, you will bring them up at some point here, and if they come up at some point here, it's important to let the council know that they're a priority, especially those things that we think we'll work jointly with the council. So, any questions about the July 15th meeting?
So, the joint session is from 5:30 to 6:00.
Correct.
Great.
Other future agenda items that you'd like to discuss or other updates? I do have some other items for future agenda, but I'm leaving it up to you.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not there yet.
Oh, you're still, you're still working down your list, never mind, sorry.
Yeah, I'm still going down my list. Don't worry, yeah. Well, I suppose I will take what might be perhaps the most uncomfortable thing on my list right now, because the rest of mine are all around future agenda items that I'd like to ask the board if they'd like to tackle. So, some members of the board might be aware that as an extension of the Capsule Project conducted by Bates students with Professor Francis Eames in April, there was the formation of a survey that was sent out to landowners within the agricultural zone. And this survey, again, as I understand, it really was an extension of that Capsule project that was conducted by students in April. However, the wording on the mailing strongly implied that it was a sort of co-project of Bates College and the Conservation Commission of Auburn. And that presents a problem in that the ordinance that describes the authority of the Conservation Commission is quite explicit that research that they, it says any research, and I think someone could have a strict reading, but my understanding would be that research, like, unique research that they initiate would require action by both the Conservation Commission and the planning board. And so, that triggered sort of a frenzied investigation into how the Conservation Commission was involved with that survey. And I was able to speak to Ms. Jordan Tate, who is the chairperson of the Conservation Commission, as well as read some of the correspondence between Professor Eames and city staff. And so, to best sort of describe the situation, I wrote it out to make sure I'm not leaving anything out. So, according to Ms. Tate, the commission provided feedback on what they perceived were holes and data gaps regarding information pertinent to the ag zone after being approached by Professor Eames. Professor Eames took the initiative to incorporate that feedback, along with feedback from organizations such as the Andruskaugan Land Trust, into his research questions for the survey. Ms. Tate asserts that the commission neither took official action on the creation of the survey, nor took action on any other aspect of the survey or Professor Eames's work regarding the ag zone. The discussion I had with Mrs. Crowley, who is also a member of the Conservation Commission, collaborates the fact that the commission did not, in fact, take any action with regards to the work being conducted by Professor Eames. So it would appear, and I give the explanation just to clarify, that it appears that the Conservation Commission did not sort of act outside of their bounds with regard to local ordinance, because it appears that they did not act at all. Ms. Tate shared that she was aware of an individual on the commission who was in attendance at meetings outside of the commission meetings in which work on the survey was discussed, and who also appears to have been in regular contact with Professor Eames. Ms. Tate asserts that this individual commission was not acting on behalf of the commission. Based on correspondences from Professor Eames, it is evident that an individual member of the planning board was also working with Professor Eames to create the survey and conduct his research on the ag zone, and that is why we're going to have a continued discussion right now, because it involves a member of the planning board. After having read the correspondences, clear from Professor Eames's correspondence with city staff, that he believed he was working in conjunction with and with full authority of both the commission and the planning board. In fact, however, neither body had given such permission or had provided such authority to Professor Eames to act on their behalves, and acting on their behalves to disseminate the survey. So we are led to conclude that Professor Eames either came to this understanding erroneously or accidentally, or because he was expressly led to believe that the commissioner and board member were working on behalf of and with full authority of both the commission and the board. The former highlights the need for municipal officials to separate themselves from their official capacities and authorities when working with the community, so as not to conflate their personal work with that of the city. to conflate their personal work with that of the city. And I'll speak to that in a moment. The latter would suggest a more serious lapse of judgment at best, and at worst, a grave and unethical misuse of one's position as a municipal official. So the issue should not be taken lightly and must be addressed. And I have the following, and the way these issues are addressed are by the board as a whole. So one individual does not act on this, so this is not, I'm going to offer a suggestion, and it is the board itself that decides how we deal with these sorts of internal matters, not the chairperson. But being the chairperson, I'm going to take advantage of that position and offer the following. Personally, it is not my nature to, personally, it is in my nature to be lenient when someone makes an honest mistake. I will ask that, in this instance, the board bear in mind that there has been no express orientation provided to board members with regard to their conduct as members outside of official board business. So to me, it is reasonable to believe that this was, in fact, an honest mistake. I would ask that the members remember, I would ask that the members remember that they have specific responsibilities to act separately from the board by expressly and overtly separating themselves from the board when they're acting without consent to the So I will open it to the board now. My personal opinion is that we, as, as, as a board in totality, adopt the position that this was an honest mistake, not one made out of malice or malintent, and that it is reasonable to believe this was an honest mistake, because it has been quite some time since the board has received any specific orientation. In fact, I may be the only member on the board that has received that specific orientation. So I, I will, having said that, I'll, I'll open it to the board to discuss if, if they feel that's reasonable, or if they feel that a different position needs to be taken.
I'll pony up first. It's where we, as a city, do not give proper orientation to board members. I believe that it would be just an honest mistake by the member, and, you know, a lesson learned, and address it as such.
Because it's something that is, is taken up by the entire board, we really need to hear from all members, but we can continue in this direction.
Given that it was a mistake, and, you know, looking back at the overall approach to the ag zone and how the planning board and the member conducted themselves, from my view objectively and fairly, I would continue on as process dictates for the board, for you.
Mr. Engler?
The words that you've spoken tonight to this topic are the first I've heard of it, so I don't have any context around what's occurred, other than what you've said. But it seems like an honest mistake, based on what you shared with us. So I would treat it as such, although, as a member of the planning board, it makes me feel a little bit disoriented, unoriented, however we want to say. So makes me want to get up to Bethel. That's my, that's my other comment.
I agree. It highlights the need for orientation, which is the next topic that, that's, that's here, that's why I'm taking this up first. And, and I apologize for the late notice. This is something that has developed, I would say, within the last 48 to 72 hours. Am I correct in that? Before this, somewhere in that timeframe, so this is quite recent.
No comment.
I think it also, I agree that it highlights the opportunity that we all should take to attend the MMA training, and I do believe that staff and the, maybe perhaps the chair should prioritize providing any available orientation at the point of appointment to the board, and not wait for MMA training, because they're offered very infrequently. So I think it's a great opportunity to highlight the need for training. I also see that Professor Eames is in the audience, and if it's appropriate, and if he's willing to speak on behalf of the issue, I think it would be important for us to hear from him as well.
I'm just going to second, or third or fourth, the need for orientation. You know, I showed up with, I got a packet in the mail. I was sworn in by the city clerk, and that's all I got.
Yeah, I agree. And it's why I felt strongly, in speaking with other municipal officials, that this is the tack that we should take on this, and not, not a more punitive one, because...
And I would say, in light of that, it sounds like it could very easily be an honest mistake.
Yep, I, I would agree. So to provide some more context, so is it, is it safe for me to assert that the, the board believes that this was a, an honest mistake, and that no action needs to be taken? Good, okay, good. So the, yeah, so this happened all quite recently. I know Professor Ains is in the audience. I can share that as recently as, like, four hours ago, just previous to the meeting, I received a call from the city manager. My hope was that we would first make this determination, and then, as a board, because we were involved, choose how we would like to proceed with the, with the Conservation Commission and the survey itself. That action was sort of superseded by the, the city manager early tonight, earlier tonight, who, to my understanding, contacted Ms. Tate. Has Mrs. Tate been in communication with, with you, Professor Ains?
Throughout the day, not since the last four hours.
Okay. Okay. Well, in, in that case, in the interest of politeness, I will let you know that the, the city manager has reached out to Mrs. Tate, and that the city manager has essentially decided which direction this should go, and sort of superseded our ability to make a decision. And I apologize that we didn't have the opportunity to sort of weigh in on how it should be handled. But the, the decision was made in the absence of discussion with, with board members or chairpersons. I can answer limited questions. So that leads into the next thing, that on July...
Could I just interject? I apologize. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I think that the Professor Eames and the work that he's done with Bates students has been really critical and really helpful in ag zone conversations, and I think it's important that, given that it does appear to have been an honest mistake, and we want to make sure that we are not alienating, alienating important community partners who are offering free services that add to the capacity of our staff. I know that one email that was circulated from, a list of questions were offered about the ag zone by the Conservation Commission, to which Eric Cousins responded, and most of the responses that he offered were that we didn't have the data available, and that there was no city staff capacity to get the answers. And so the, you know, the relationships that we have with Bates are important to filling needed data, data gaps. So I think that it's really important to maintain those relationships and to acknowledge the, you know, what we're being offered.
I, I agree, and I think it's, it's, I think that the possible damage done is, is an unfortunate outcome of, of, of a mistake, and unfortunately, that, we cannot control everything, and I do think it's important that, that we recognize the contributions of our community partners. But unfortunately, this, this is one of those things that has been done, and we can't undo it, and I think the best we can do is continue to be positive and reach out, and just try to be a little more diligent in the future. So, July 30th, there is a training being held in Bethel. I have spoken to Mrs. Boss, and Mrs. Boss has graciously agreed to put together a, a, a group of materials that, that she feels were incredibly important for her to learn as a new member. So this comes on the heels of the need for an orientation, which has been an ongoing discussion between Mrs. Knight and myself for several months at this point. Unfortunately, I have sort of weighed in that, I felt that the, the work we were doing for, for the ag zone sort of was so intense that I asked for things to be put on the back burner. And so, however, I think this is a great time to sort of use this, as well as some other recent events, to, to highlight the need to, to have these sorts of trainings. So Mrs. Boss will be reporting back to us next month with information that she felt, feels will be important. I want to ask members, can you please, in the next day or two, email Mrs. Boss with questions that you have, that you think she could be able to ask or get information with regard to during that training? This could help Mrs. Boss sort of give her sort of a direction when she comes back. Also, my expectation will be that when Mrs. Boss comes back and gives us her presentation, that we are thoughtful, and that we have follow-up questions that we can develop in order to continue sort of an ongoing, I guess, for lack of a better term, professional development. In the meantime, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Knight disseminate an electronic version of our policy handbook, and I guess some questions are answered in that, although not all questions are answered in that.
And I would just, just to chime in on this overall conversation, committees that are created often have very specific roles, and some of those are very, very complicated once they get into some substantive policy issues that the city is grappling with. And I, I think it's to the Conservation Commission's credit that they reached out and used the resources of Bates, and have been working with them to try to, to answer some of their questions. I think it, it's tough for committees to get the help they need, and all of us are, at the staff level, are, are overtasked currently. So I think, in this case, particularly a recommend, a part of that committee's role, one, one paragraph or so that, that talks about research and coordinating that with the planning board, it's understandable that that's, that's potentially not something that was at the top of someone's head. And given people that work full-time and are trying to meet these committee boards, as well as all of you who work and try to come here, it, people have pretty demanding schedules, and just coordinating joint meetings and sharing of information can be challenging. I, I will say, anytime you are appointed to a committee as a planning board member, hopefully, your role, because you're coming from the planning board to a committee, or whether it's interim or anything else, is for you to come back to the planning board and share the issues that are being discussed, get input from your fellow members, and then truly be a representative of the board as a whole, back to that committee. You, as an individual citizen, that's a different story, and you're coming with your own opinions and your own contributions, just as you come to this table. But if you are appointed or participating in a committee, that, because there's a lot of them that pop up around here, that you're going to be asked to serve on, that you basically come and share those issues, and make sure, we'll make sure there's a time, if you're serving on one of these committees or boards, that you have an opportunity to get that input you need to truly be representative to, of the planning board, back to that committee. So if you're just a member, and you happen to be a planning board member, it is up to you to say, I'm not representing the planning board, I'm here just as a member of the public, because I'm interested in this.
Yeah, it is, yeah. To piggyback, to piggyback on that, we, we all get put in those situations, and it's incredibly important that we're like expressly overt in stating that, you know, I'm acting as an individual, because sometimes we don't realize that other people might perceive us as acting on authority of the board, when we, in fact, aren't. So, and I guess I sort of, I sort of skipped over this, but it is incredibly important that we do that. I strongly advocated, in this case, throughout the last day and a half, that, and as I learned more information, that I strongly advocated that we recognize the lack of training provided to board members and commissioners, and that we utilize this as a, a learning opportunity. That was not necessarily the position of all individuals involved, and it's important for us to know that I think that I successfully argued that point, and that's been accepted. But I think in the future, it would be very difficult to make a, to make a similar assertion with regard to the, to the same specific sort of circumstance, and that there are a number of things that can happen, as, 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 as small as the planning board sort of publicly centering a member to the point where the city council might actually remove a member. And so, again, I, 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 I'm glad that we didn't really entertain that, because I think this was a teachable moment. But it's, it's important that we recognize that intended or unintended, sometimes our actions have sort of grave, not grave is maybe too strong, but can have some unintended negative consequences, so.
Evan, may I also make another suggestion? Maybe this is about agenda items, that if you are out in the community, participating in things, or just getting knowledge around things, there should be a point in our, our meetings where you can share that information? If you've been to workshops, or to a, you know, Build, the Build Maine Conference, or you are participating in another committee, or participating with a Bates study, or something like that. I think it's important, particularly if it touches on anything that we talk about on an ongoing basis, or issues that we might be talking about, that you share that.
Well, I, we do. At the end, we, you know, if we ask if anyone has something to add, I just think that we maybe haven't been aware that sometimes there are things that we should let the board know that, that we may not think are a big deal, or...
Well, we don't really provide that in our agenda, and I think that might be...
No, I know, we do that informally. I, I agree. It's not formally on the agenda. However, I don't, I don't remember a meeting while I was on the board that we didn't ask, does anyone have something to add at the end?
Yeah.
So that's thing, so, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 4, deals with the planning board, and under that are, describes some of our authorities. And so I'm going to throw out two possible future agenda items, and then I will ask what things other members would like to be working on. I was heavily involved in the, well, everyone on the board at the time was heavily involved in the development of the form-based code. That code was implemented at the time, the board wanted to see a much larger implementation that was curtailed primarily based on concerns from the city council, and that they wanted to sort of float it in a smaller area of the city. I personally thought it was a great idea. It shifts the focus from specific use to form, such that neighborhood, visual neighborhood cohesiveness is maintained, while still maintaining controls over use. And I would really like the board to refamiliarize itself with the form-based code, and contemplate possible expansion of the code into other parts of the city where it could be relevant. And specific to one of our authorities, we have the authority to provide recommendations for amendment and implementation of the comp plan. That is not something that the board has attempted in several years. I think that was because the previous attempt met with some less-than-favorable reaction from the council. However, that council, the current council, is not the council that did that, and there's been a, a large turnover on the planning board as well, and we're about to see a new council. And so it might be a good, a good time for... And so, it might be a good time for us to go and review the comp plan and those areas of the comprehensive plan that we would like to either see amended or implemented, or conversely, work to promote the initiation of a complete rewrite of the comprehensive plan. There's a 10-year comprehensive plan, and that 10 years is up next year. We can recommend to the city council that we keep the current plan with revisions. We could recommend to the council that we completely rewrite the plan, but I don't think we can do either one of those without beginning the work of looking at the plan itself and what it is, and what things we have been tasked with implementing and keeping track of in that plan. So, those are things, as a chair, that I would like to see us to begin looking at. Having said that, I know that several members have their own priorities outside of the comp plan and sort of specific code. I know that staff right now is currently working on a use table, similar to the use table in form-based code, so that certainly will be coming for us, before us, so we should see some zoning amendment changes with regard to how we define or categorize use in the zoning itself coming before us as well. Are there any topics that individuals would like to see the board at least begin to contemplate or work on? And I think I started on this end last time, so Mr. Engler, I'll start with you. I know, I'm sorry.
I really would have benefited from the extra seconds.
Okay. I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Nothing at this time?
No.
Couple of seconds.
I'm going to throw out something.
Yeah, I'm like, wow, what happened? Everyone always has some opinions on stuff, yeah.
So, I am not from Auburn. I accidentally moved to the city a year ago, but I'm very much enjoying living here. So, thank you, neighbors. And I am aware that there was this whole movement to try to merge the cities of Lewiston and Auburn that has failed at the ballot box. I assume that there's still, I know there's a ton of cooperation between the two municipalities. I wonder if there's not opportunities for further cooperation between the municipalities to save money or improve service delivery? And I'm not sure if there, you know, because if we're saying we're not going to merge the cities, that's fine, but is there any active effort to look at opportunities for new collaboration and cooperation?
Okay, and I think being the planning board, we'd have to sort of limit our scope to sort of-
You put me on the spot, sir.
No, I like it. It's a great idea. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Well, I can tell you one item that I've been communicating, we haven't necessarily gotten off the ground yet, but on an art ordinance, which essentially would be a collaboration with Lewiston and Auburn.
An art ordinance?
Art ordinance, or an art district, that would be a fundraising mechanism that would contribute to a joint LA fund or project.
I'd love to stick to that on a radar.
So, I, it's, I've been getting, bringing in all the different art districts that I know about around the country and trying to work on that, but we'll see what LA has in mind, or Lewiston has in mind, but we're, we've been talking.
I know this isn't a collaboration in one way, but I would like to sit with the Lewiston Planning Board and see what is going on, because there's several projects right on the border with us.
That is an excellent idea. The last time that happened, I think, was seven years ago, and it was my second meeting. So, that's a great idea.
Because they're looking to move the college, the USM College, to downtown. How will that affect us, you know, for one thing, if they do?
And since you bring up the joint meeting with the Lewiston Planning Board, I was going to ask this planning board, as we look at the comp plan, we're coming off the heels of looking at the Ag Zone, and if you look at the comp plan, one thing is very clear in the comp plan, and that is that most of the agricultural land that is around the lakes is actually described as conservation land in the comp plan. And I think part of the difficulty we had with tackling the Ag Zone is that we have sort of two things conflated. We have conservation and agriculture. We have conservation, which is sort of saving and banking land for future and current use with minimal impact on the land, and we have agriculture, which has historically been an intensive use of the land. And so, those two things together sort of create some interesting difficulties. I would love us to, I would love to see us implementing that part of the comprehensive plan, but of course, that will require that we meet with the Conservation Commission, because I think if we're going to create a conservation zone, it only makes sense that we would include them and lean on them for input. So, would we like to, even though we're not discussing that right now, and we may not discuss that in the near future, would we like to at least begin reaching out to the Conservation Commission and having a joint meeting, if for nothing else, just to sort of describe what we do? They can describe what they're up to, and we can talk about how we interface?
Good idea.
Is there anything else that any members would like to bring up or discuss at this We have a section for a public comment. Is there any public comment?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so, the meetings are recorded, so please name an address or official capacity.
Sure, yeah, I can do all those things. So, my name is Francis Eens. I recognize a few of you, but some of you, it's my first time, so nice to meet you all. I work over at Bates College in the Environmental Studies Program. I live in Lewiston, and I've worked extensively with various community partners, as well as the city of Auburn and the city of Lewiston, on projects, both with students and in my own capacity as a researcher. I'm an environmental social scientist by training, and all of the research that I've done, both before coming to Bates and at Bates, has been entirely done for the benefit of the end users of my research. I try, from the very beginning, as I'm developing questions, try and understand, what are the questions that communities are asking, and how can the tools that I have be of best use, so that I'm not just doing research for my own sake, or talking to other academics? And I share that with you, because that's absolutely been what's happened in the last two months with the development of the survey that you referenced. And so, I don't want to get too far into it, except to say, I want to just clarify for the record, that all of the feedback that I got from everyone who looked at various iterations of the survey and weighed in on what are the broad questions that they should ask, in, at no point was anyone acting in their official capacity, or giving me the impression that they were speaking for the board or any city staff office. That said, many hands were involved, many people saw the drafts, and I believe Chair Tate has shared with you a PDF version of the survey, and I hope that can be shared with all members of the planning board, because I stand behind this work 100%, and there's, I want everyone to feel this sense of transparency that's been part of my process from the very beginning. I'm interested in this Ag Zone issue for my own personal reasons, in terms of my research interests, but like I said, I'm more interested in this, because I recognize that as a really contentious issue, there are unexplored areas that I believe would really benefit the public process. And one of my core values as a person and as a researcher is to increase the democratic participation in consequential city decisions. And this survey is a deliberate attempt to do that. And when I say attempt, it's actually, it's doing it right now. Every single person who owns land in the Ag Zone has been invited to participate. The questions have been developed and vetted through a really robust process. There'll be multiple attempts to reach all people who own land in an equal way. And again, I invite you to look at the questions, and the issue, I believe, that is of pertinence to this particular board, is the second sentence that is describing the purpose of the survey. And I believe one of the most simple ways to make this a non-issue would be simply to take out the words "the Auburn Conservation Commission" and simply say, "Bates College is interested in hearing from you." But just to clarify, no one on this board acted in an official capacity in giving me feedback. As you all know, many of these, you all, wear multiple hats in your professional lives, and that's true of the Conservation Commission as well. So, I'm saying that not to push back against your narrative, but simply to clarify that to the extent that any mistake was made, I take responsibility for misinterpreting the enthusiastic feedback and input from the Conservation Commission, and the fact that this survey was sent to multiple people with this language, and no one at any point told me, "Hey, there's actually a subsection of our charter that says we must go through this process." Had that been done, I would have been glad to put this in front of you, in front of the Conservation Commission, and I still am happy to do that. I just don't want anyone to take any heat on my behalf for a misunderstanding that now has been brought to my attention, but previously wasn't. So, that said, I actually think that procedural issues aside, and I recognize that that's important, I actually think that you all might really appreciate what might come out of this, and I'd be more than happy to share the results of this with you. And just to clarify, the intent of this survey is to understand what the current land uses are happening on every single person who responds to the survey's land, what they value most about this community, about this rural community, both in the past and now, and what they hope to do with their land. And I hope those three questions together, including those who live in the Ag Zone and those who simply own land but don't live in the Ag Zone, might shed light on, well, what are the goals that any future ordinance changes ought to serve? And I certainly, again, will share those results with you, whether you endorse this survey and put your names on it or not, but just to clarify, the planning board's name is not actually on this survey, just the Conservation Commission.
I understand. That's, that came specifically from an email.
Yeah.
Correspondence that you have, because it originated from you, and I could show you after, but it gave a distinct impression.
The email, the email that I believe you're referring to was, was sent to Eric Cousins.
Correct.
And it was my attempt to give him background on the process I had used to develop the survey. And I simply, because of shorthand, mentioned that there had been some people who also affiliate with the planning board and the Conservation Commission, so that it wasn't just some outside group of people that have no familiarity with the city. That was all. It wasn't to say that they had done that.
It highlights the sticky wicket of, of public service and municipal government, and how a single word changed here and there has incredibly different implications, and it can generate vastly different outcomes. And again, it is why, when this was being discussed amongst individuals, I advocated for a teachable moment. For the record, I don't know who the, who the planning board members, I specifically asked not to know. It was not particularly important to me. It's just that we, that we used it as a teachable moment to recognize that sometimes we just, when we, we haven't had that training a long time, and so, that is-
Yeah, but I'll take responsibility for my part for not doing more of the background due diligence on my end. So, to the extent that that heat might be taken by anyone on the Conservation Commission, I hope that that can be taken into account as well.
Well, they'll have to deal with it on their own. We have no authority over them, so they'll do with it how they, how they choose. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. And again, please take a look at the survey. I invite you to take it if you are a landowner, and I look forward to sharing the results with you at some time in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to follow up, maybe we can meet and talk about this, you know, earlier this, maybe tomorrow, tomorrow, the next day? I'm interested in your methodology, and then where you hope to go with this data in terms of-
Absolutely. Be happy to. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Holly Zania, 220 West Auburn Road, and Ward One City Councilor, and I'm here speaking as Ward One City Councilor. I want to really give you a lot of credit for deciding that having trainings is important. When I came on, I was given a key, and I didn't know what it went to. And that was basically what I got for training. So, it's something that I feel is very important, and I know that Assistant City Manager Kroll is taking this, taking this responsibility up, and will be working with all of the boards and the commissions, not only to make sure that they get, I guess I would call it ethics trainings, but also just understand what their responsibilities are and they aren't, and the resources that are available to them and that are not available. So, I appreciate that you all are doing this, and I appreciate the conversation, and I look forward to getting some orientation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I will assume, I will assume public comment is done. All right. Again, anything else that anyone would like to share? Seeing nothing, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good, because in three minutes, the lights go out.
Republican.
I see this right here.
Yeah, he goes, "Oh, I can help you." And I say, "Yeah, you probably can't." But it was nice of him, though.